Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have a quorum present. I don't know where Mr. Chang is, but Mr. Berry is on holiday in Florida. And I would say more, but I won't. A first item on our agenda, as with every meeting, is citizens' concerns. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to raise issues that are not on our agenda. Yes?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. And I've been getting a lot of questions about the petition to ask the Board of Selectmen to get an appraisal of the Kmart parcels. And the petition is only about whether we want to get an appraisal. It isn't about what do we do with the parcels? But to help people be comforted in the idea that we would, if we did ever buy the parcels, that we would actually have a community process to figure it out. And so I created a 10-question survey. It's on my election website, TaraForActon.com. It's the button to the right. And so this will be presented as part of my town meeting eight minutes. And there is one question of, that you can say no to, that you don't want to buy the parcels. So the question says, "If it's affordable, do you want to buy the parcels?" And it has all kinds of other options, like community center, you know, incubator space, public market, et cetera. So I hope you take the survey. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bob.
I think the mic just went off. Did you push the button on the base? Oh, no. Did you step on the wire? Oh, grief. No, what about the handheld mic? Yeah. This is not good. It shouldn't be like that in any way. No, Tara, that's all right. We don't want you to electrocute yourself or something, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bob Secula from Parkland Lane. Like something on the order of 200 or so other homeowners, I received a note from the Board of Selectmen indicating that there'd be a public hearing on March 29th. The notice said that many of the materials are posted on the town's website, which is terrific, and I looked at them. And it also says that the actual permit, or draft permit, I assume, is available for public inspection during business hours at Town Hall. Fine. I am hoping that the Board of Selectmen, given how long the process has gone on for this permit discussion, the Board of Selectmen will not wait until the very last deadline set by the open-meeting law in order to post the actual permit so that it can be more easily inspected. I understand that you guys are not obligated to do that until 48 hours before the actual hearing begins, but I ask, I implore, the Board of Selectmen to make that available on the web as soon as possible. I understand it is still under revision, but please, given how long and how much time has been spent, time and energy town residents have given to this process, I urge you to try to be expeditious in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Generally, we don't waste a lot of time trying to post these things. And typically, when things are at the last minute, because that's when they're resolved and ready for publication at the last minute. So, thank you. Anybody else? Citizens' concerns? Okay. Chairman's update. I had sort of a lot of little items, and I have to start with sad news. Longtime resident Brewster Conant died last night at age 89. And I actually was one person who thought, hoped he would live forever. He seemed ageless. The obituary is on the Acton Funeral Home website, ActonFuneralHome.com. There will be a celebration of his life in June. And in lieu of flowers, the family suggests donation to the Acton Historical Society, Friends of the Acton Arboretum, or the Acton Conservation Trust, which coincidentally had its annual meeting last night, which Brewster typically attended. The League of Women Voters had their local candidates event on Saturday at the Conant School. It was very well-attended. It was a new format modeled on speed dating, hence the description of it as "candidate-ing" event. There were 11 candidates for moderator, library trustee, the Board of Selectmen, school committee, the Water District Commission, Acton Water District Moderator. Each did three-minute introductions and then conversed in six-minute stints at each of 11 tables of voters. Very engaging and informative. The Acton Conservation Trust, as I mentioned, had their annual meeting last night in this room. The guest speaker was Tom Riccardi, a retired 40-year state game warden who now rehabilitates injured birds of prey, owls, hawks, eagles, falcons. And a number of his patients accompanied him. They're recovered, but with permanent disabilities that preclude their being returned to the wild. Room 204 was filled with delighted audience members, and Senator Eldridge was this year's recipient of the Carol Holly Conservation Award. The transfer station will continue to accept post-storm brushroom debris at no charge from Acton residents until Tuesday, March 27th. The Robert Creely Award reading will be Tuesday, tomorrow, March 20th, at 7:30 p.m. at the high school. The reading is by this year's winner, poet and prose writer Mark Doty at the auditorium. As I said, Mr. Doty has written numerous books of poetry, as well as memoirs, and received the National Book Award for Poetry in 2008. The Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Improvement Plan Public Forum update will be Wednesday, March 21st, at 7:30 p.m. in this room, weather permitting. The Acton Water District Annual Meeting will be Wednesday, also at 7 o'clock in the library, weather permitting. There will be a gas leaks forum on Thursday, March 22nd, 7 o'clock, this room. The Acton Boxborough Cultural Council Annual Grantees Reception is this Friday at 7 o'clock at the Sargent Library in Boxborough. It's by invitation. Invitations went to the board sometime back in January, I believe. The annual film series that the Cultural Council sponsors will start in late April and run through May. It's four nights on Friday in this room, one night of student short films, and three full-length foreign films. Stay tuned for details. The League of Women Voters warrant meeting will be next Monday, the 26th, 7 o'clock p.m. in this room. There will be brief presentations about certain warrant articles of great interest. Some selectmen will be among the presenters, so it will be kind of a rehearsal for town meeting. Local Election Day is Tuesday, March 27th. The polls are open, 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. Please vote. The moderators' pre-town meeting meeting, which is preparation for anybody who's presenting at town meeting, is Wednesday, March 28th, 7 o'clock, at the Public Safety Facility. And annual town meeting starts Monday, April 2nd, 7 o'clock, the high school auditorium. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And based on the weather forecast for Wednesday, we may be extending the brush again. It's hard to say at the moment. It's supposed to be heavy, wet snow. I wanted to report to the board that we have reached one-year settlement with both the Patrol Union and Superior Officers Union of the Police Department, one-year extension to the existing contract at 2%. And an increase in the extra pay details, the details, they basically do off-duty when utilities are working out in the street and things like that. So those two will be brought to town meeting in a couple weeks. We are having a visit from the Lieutenant Governor tomorrow. She had contacted us wanting to meet with town staff and get a sense of local issues and what we're dealing with, so she'll be here tomorrow afternoon. The Department of Transportation just put out a study of the 200 worst intersections based on crashes, and Acton has the 191st worst intersection, that being Piper Road and Route 2. So hopefully, the state will have some money to correct that situation. In case you're wondering, Kelly Square in Worcester is the number-one place, if anybody's been there. And I grew up in Worcester, I know what that's like. Finally, the chair mentioned Brewster Conant. We will be having the flag at half-mast here at Town Hall for Brewster tomorrow and Wednesday in honor of all the years he's spent serving the community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Our first appointment, and actually only appointment, 7:10, Common Ground, Chapter 40B, Project 446 Massachusetts Ave. Mr. Jankus. If it's easier, you could both sit at the mics here. I don't know. What's your pleasure? Especially because that microphone seems to be a little bit touchy. You have to use the handheld, I think, Nancy, if you have comments. Oh, yeah. I hope that's working.
I only need it for about one minute, so it's okay. I'm Nancy Tavernier, Chairman of the Acton Community Housing Corporation, and here tonight to listen to the presentation by Common Ground. We have been working on this proposal for almost a year, this particular parcel. They may give a little more background than that. This is a DHCD project, but it is not a LIP. A LIP would require a vote and a signature on an application from you. That's not the case with this one. This is very, completely similar to the old High School Commons, low-income housing tax credit project, which means it relies on state and federal funding and is extremely competitive and complicated and could take up to another three years before it actually breaks ground. So I'm going to introduce you to Steve Jankus from Common Ground Development Corporation, and Dan Barton, who is the architect from Mogul Architects in Harvard. Dan also did the old high school project, as did Steve. And I'm going to turn it over to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Common Ground, as you may know, is a nonprofit subsidiary of Community Teamwork, which is a community action program agency headquartered in Lowell. Nancy's Correct, our organization, did develop Old High School Commons, thanks to the support of this board and this community, and Nancy and the ACHC. That project involved multiple sources, and it was an interesting challenge for us all, but we're very, very proud of the outcome, and we hope that you are too. That project, as you know, is family-oriented. I spoke to Nancy just over a year ago about whether or not there were other opportunities in Acton to develop affordable housing in a way that was consistent with your vision for how to meet the community's needs in that regard. And she mentioned to me that 446 Mass Ave was available, that Steven Steinberg, who had it under agreement, and at the time was interested in developing either seven or eight units, that some of which would be attached as a 40B project, was interested in entering into an agreement with another entity to pursue development there. So we did manage to reach an agreement with Mr. Steinberg, and the purchase and sale agreement has been assigned to us. What we're proposing, and I'll let Dan go through a description of the plans, but what we're proposing is senior housing for those who are 62 and over. And it would be a rental project consisting of 31 units. Each of them would be one bedrooms, and they would be affordable rentals. All of the units would be at 60% of area median income or below. We're projecting rents at $1,031 for those 60% thresholds. We'd also have some project-based assistance, so for those who are on a fixed income, say Social Security, if their income is at 30% or below of area median income, that project-based assistance would be able to assist them with making up the difference in order to afford living there at 30% of their income. The development is one that we think really does address a community need. As we understand it, there's a waiting period of some years for senior housing units at the Housing Authority. And we're hopeful that the development will be competitive with DHCD for the various funding sources that are going to be necessary in order to make this work. And given the time that we have, I'll ask Dan Barton, who's our architect from Mogul, to give you a presentation on the site plan and the architectural plans that they stand. I should add that we're at the very, very early stages of the 40B process. We have not submitted an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals. As you know, that's the organization under 40B that accepts the application for what is called a comprehensive permit. We have submitted an application, which you've been copied on, to DHCD for a site approval letter. And in part, this meeting is to answer any questions that you may have, because they do request comments from the Board of Selectmen. But again, we're at a very preliminary stage. Based on the input that we've received from the planning department, the meetings that we've had with the department heads, we did have a public information session as well that Nancy's group organized. And on your comments, we'll be looking to incorporate as much as we can as part of the formal process, assuming that DHCD approves the site selection. Dan?
Sure.
Is that working? I'll come behind so that... Again, I'm Dan Barton from Mogul Architects in Harvard. I've seen some of you at meetings recently, but thank you for having us here this evening. In front of you is the site plan. Mass Ave is at the top of the plan. And we've essentially designed a project that very efficiently uses the site and the amount of property that we have. It also uses to our advantage the grading. If any of you have seen the site from Mass Ave, there's actually an inclined driveway that comes up to a house that sits on the property right now. We're maintaining a rise off of Mass Ave, and with some cut-and-fill, using to our advantage the sloped portion of the site to create a parking area off of which the building sits to the side. And again, using the topography on the site, we've actually set the building into the grade in such a way that the high side of the building will act as a retaining wall and create a lower level of the building that actually has walkout directly to the grade along the right-of-way, whereas then up above, there are two floors of the building. As Steve mentioned, it's very efficiently designed, 31 units, all single-bedroom units, all about 700, 703 square feet, somewhere in that range, depending upon how they fall in along the building. But as you look on the floor plan, very efficiently organized off of a central corridor, where you can come in on the main floor of the building with an accessible entrance immediately adjacent to the parking. And as the parking continues to slope down towards the back of the site, there's a second entrance at the backside of the building that comes into the lower level. It would be served by an elevator. At that lower floor, we would have room for community services. We're expecting that there could be a group in there, whether it's a food pantry or elder services, could be some type of physical therapy. There's room in there, a couple of thousand square feet available for space on that lower floor. There's a centralized mailroom. There are storage bays for each of the residents in the building, storage cages that are set down as an amenity at the lower level. And then as you continue to go up, right along the corner, front corner of the building in Mass Ave, we've created a farmer's porch, a place to be outside, and access to some of the yard area directly adjacent to that. And then as you continue up in the building, we put the community room for the residents at the top of the floor, top of the building, as opposed to downstairs at the lowest level, gets the best light, the best air. And on a mid-level, we've actually created a small outdoor residence porch that looks out into the woods, which is quite nice. So a number of amenities have been considered. We do, by Mass Architectural Access Board regulations, all of the units in the building will be Group 1, so they all have entrances that are accessible. They're all laid out to be, allowing for mobility to and from all common areas, in and out of the units. Two of the units are going to be required, it's a 5% requirement, to be a Group 2 unit. Those will be considered fully accessible. The Group 1 units have features that allow them to be transferred or modified to become accessible. But the entire facility is considered to be an accessible building at all levels from both entrances. Looking at the aesthetics of the building, as Steve had mentioned... What's that? Is this one flipped upside-down? I can't see that. A little bit better. So, very conceptual initial rendering for the project, but given the scale of the building with the 31 units, it does occupy a footprint of about 12,500 square feet. We did not want to make it look like a series of row houses or small, little New England houses. We embraced the scale of the building and went with a more contemporary, simple approach, using very New England materials, clapboard siding, trim, nicely broken-up windows, but in an application that's a little bit more contemporary, which I think works quite well with the overall scale of the building, and frankly complements a bit the flat-roofed old-town school across the way. It's not immediately adjacent to any particular property that we're trying to mimic, and frankly it wouldn't be appropriate, it's a brand-new building. But we're excited about the possibilities that have created by just combining play on some different material textures, a little bit of color, and again, wrapping that whole front of the building with a big farmer's porch to make it welcoming and approachable. I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got. As Steve mentioned, it's still very much a conceptual design, but we have enjoyed getting a lot of positive feedback already from some of the department heads that we've met with.
I would just say that it's my understanding from the file that there's a deadline of the 22nd for us to get our, the board comments in, if we have any, to, I think, the state and so... Anyhow, but that's, first, let me open it up for my colleagues to ask questions or make comments. Katie, I'll turn to you, because you always do.
I always have something. No, thank you. I was really, started hearing about this project around, and then getting to see the application, very interested, and just wanted to thank you for, you know, kind of focusing this on being 100% affordable and completely accessible. I think it's really meeting a need. Like you said, that's definitely identified in our community. So I think, I think it's great, and I really liked the look when I saw it. Like you said, it's, you know, much more modern or contemporary, but I think it's very neat. So one question I had was, I think, some, I think Janet had mentioned this, just because I've been asking all of our 40B developers, that I'd heard you've been thinking about potentially using aerosol heat pumps instead of, you know, connecting to natural gas or others, and I was wondering if you're still considering doing that and would very much encourage you to do so.
Thank you. Yes, we were talking about this at the department head meeting. Obviously, the building's not fully designed, but what our strong sense is, is that given the square footage of the units, it works beautifully for heat pumps. We can get heating and cooling and controlled individually by each unit. And given the arrangement of a flat roof with a parapet, we can also screen all of the outdoor compressors. So it makes a lot of sense. We even think that there'll be some roof leftover, so that if in the future there wants to be some sort of a solar opportunity up there, it could be considered. The only place that we're thinking it may not work well for the heat pumps will be in the common areas and the corridors, because we want to make sure we've always got proper airflow. So we'll need to come up with a system. We could use heat pumps or heating and cooling. We'll need to add some sort of ventilation system as well.
Okay, yeah, and I definitely, I know some of our units at the Acton Housing Authority have been using them to great success. Will the tenants pay utilities, or is that part, would that be included in the rent?
The way it's structured right now, it's envisioned that the tenants would pay their utilities.
Okay, great. Well, this will help with costs as well. And then, I really like the idea of the, having the community room that other, you know, I think you had mentioned in the application, council, and aging, or others that could use this, and I just encourage you also, if you don't know about our nursing service, but to think about potential ways to have them use that space as well, because I think it's the population that they tend to serve, so it'd be great. They do podiatry clinics and other things, so, you know, an option as well. And then, is there, is there anybody on-site, staff on-site? Okay, I thought I had read that.
Thank you. There is an office for an on-site manager, and I forgot to mention that, immediately adjacent to the mailroom and the main entrance.
Okay, and how long are they? Is it for just a portion of the day, or...
It's likely that that would be occupied on a part-time basis. But the same management company that manages Old High School Commons, manages the rest of our portfolio, they'd also be managing this as well. So it's conceivable to me that with the combination of the two, they would have someone there more often than not.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, otherwise, like I said, I think it's really interesting, and you've definitely, you know, it's not a large lot, so you've had to be creative, like you said, but I've liked how, you know, you've sort of fitted in with the topography of the site and really made it work. So, thank you, and I really hope it's all able to come together. I know these take a very long time, so thank you for sticking with it and being interested in making this happen.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Janet?
Joan?
Yes. How many parking spaces will there be?
There's 41 or 42 parking spaces, roughly about 1.3 per unit.
That it, Joan?
Yeah.
Ching Sun, any question? Okay.
No, no questions.
I actually, I actually don't have any questions, because I went to the department heads' meeting, and then I went to the public information session, so I'm pretty familiar with the project, but I think I'd like to open it up if people in the audience have questions. This is your opportunity to ask. Oh, you're going to need, that microphone is bad. Yeah, you're going to have to share the handheld microphone.
Here we go. Danny Factor, 11 Davis Road, also a member of the Acton Commission on Disabilities. First of all, this is wonderful to hear this update, particularly on the Commission on Disabilities. We're very concerned about a need for more accessible units. It's also great to hear about the affordability. I'm also a director of Green Acton, one of them, and it's wonderful to hear about the aerosol heat pumps as well. The only question I had is in regard to the 30% and below, you know, say if someone is on Social Security, whether, does that refer to Social Security disability or SSI? And is, in that case, if someone is on Social Security, is the 62-year-old rule waived? In other words, if somebody is on disability...
If someone is truly legally defined as disabled, that is waived.
Wonderful. It's just absolutely wonderful to hear. So I encourage the town to do everything to support this project, and I'll report that to the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else from the audience?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I looked at the plan that's back here, because I couldn't see this, but it seemed like it's coming awfully close to, and I support in general, I support the concept in general. Seems like it's coming quite close to the street, much closer than any of the other buildings there. And so I was worried about town character and about the neighbors. I think there was talk about it looking like it would fit in, and it looks like it fits in with Kmart, that's for sure. But I was wondering if you're going to do something so that it would fit better in with the houses that are already there? Thank you.
So, as I understand it, we're within the setback requirements of the zoning code. We did review the project design and the building situation on the lot with the planning board, I'm sorry, with the planning department staff. And one of the amenities that we added, if you can see it on the plan, is the farmer's porch, which is meant to break up its appearance on the main street and to enhance that sense of, gee, it's a, it's a single-family home. So as you're driving, as you're driving down Mass Ave or driving up, it's going to be, because of the way the site is situated, it'd be more difficult to see the entire building. You're going to see probably the front portion of it more than anything else, given the sightlines.
Oops. Oh, here it's on. And so the... And so, the, a part of the building that is forward of the other houses, is it the same size as the other houses, that it's jutting out into the area? Thank you for the porch, by the way, I think it does look better. So how much into the, beyond the other houses is it?
In, in terms of the existing houses and how they're setback from the street, or?
Yeah, it looks like it's gonna jut way out compared to the others.
So, part of the constraint that we have is a feasibility constraint, and the reason that there are 31 units is that that's kind of a sweet spot in terms of making this project economically feasible. If we had fewer units, then the challenge would be, A, to make it attractive to investors in the low-income housing tax credits, and B, the challenge from a management standpoint would be, to the extent that we had extended vacancies, it would be difficult to meet the requirements for keeping the reserves up for replacements, keeping the reserves up in case we have shortfalls in income for some reason.
Sorry, I forgot about profit, for the moment. Is it a big company that's investing this, or a small, local company?
Common Ground has--
Oh, it's Common Ground, I know where they are. And is it possible that you could put a pitched roof in the front, so it looks like it's a house with a barn, as opposed to, you know, something that looks kind of like a factory? I see almost the same design being used in Roxbury and areas, industrial parks, and it looks great there. I'm just concerned that, that the neighbors here might feel differently.
Can I speak to that?
Sure, please.
Yeah, I would have to highly disagree. I actually happen to have served as the chairman of the Historic District Commission in Groton for 19 years, and what's really wonderful about this site, and what's wonderful about this neighborhood, is the diversity in the building typology. You go right down to the end of the street, you go to Kelly's Corner, you've got a wonderful, vibrant mix of building types, and in fact, the entire retail district down there has been re-clad to look fresh and new and, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, quite inspired. And as you continue up the street, you know, directly across from here is old-town, old high school, which has a flat roof, with the exception of two very small, low-pitched parapet details that are over the two entryways. We did not want it to look like a house or a barn, because it's not trying to replicate anything. It is its own structure, and I would challenge anyone to drive around and look at some of the more current residential, large-scale developments. If you go into West Concord, for instance, wonderful housing has just been developed. It's very, very similar in nature. And if you take this building and compare it to that, we're probably about one-tenth the size, and it works very nicely with a two-story building.
Thank you. I don't particularly care for the West Concord development, and I hope that you make it look more like the town building, and if you, would you put this in, in Groton downtown?
Absolutely.
Great. So I hope you bring that character to it, because I think that, just because it's people who don't have a lot of money, doesn't mean that it has to be ugly. Thank you.
Tara, aesthetics is in the eye of the beholder, honestly. I don't, I don't think it's ugly, and there were, at the public outreach meeting, there was somebody who lives in the cute Cape House, the red one that you see when, and was used as sort of the model for the Davis, Davis Place development, and he had nothing to say about the design, you know?
Okay, thank you.
I happen to think it's very attractive, and, and the architect did make the point that if you added all the little doodads to make it cute, be quaint and all that, it would add to the expense without adding to the value of the structural integrity, so.
Thank you. I just want people, even if they're of vulnerable economic status, to have beauty in their lives too. Thank you.
I think the aim is to provide a very well-built structure that is manageable cost-wise, okay? I don't think that there's any intention to give short shrift to people who don't have a lot of money. I think it's quite the opposite. They're trying to provide a very nice living accommodation for people who otherwise don't have very many choices, or not as many as people in our town, so.
Thank you. Common Ground, they make pretty good salaries, so we want to keep that going too. Thank you.
Well, anybody else, public comment? All right, well, I think that, at this point, I, the board should talk about whether you want to submit comments and what you want to say, and I will be responsible for putting the comments together before the 22nd.
I mean, I'll make a, do you want specific, I don't have anything specific--
No, I think that I could, you know, I can cite, there's material in the application. The ACHC has provided a memo, it cites all of the positives of it, and, you know, starting with the need for such housing in the town, but I've done this often enough that I can put together a laudable letter, so.
So I would make a motion to authorize the chair of the Board of Selectmen to submit a, I don't know if you want to say, a letter of support for the 46, 446 Mass Ave application to DHCD.
Katie Moose and Joan seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to seeing this, I know it's gonna take years, but--
Well, we might get fortunate.
Yeah, I know, well, we'll be lucky.
And the fact, and the fact that the town is providing its support should make a difference, and the participation from Acton Community Housing Corporation will make a difference as well. So we appreciate the support, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I'd add one more note also, that we spent quite a bit of time with Roland, looking at this from a planning perspective, and he even agreed that if we were to put a pitched roof on the front of it, we'd only be adding to the height of this structure as it sits on, on the road, and what we've actually done is fairly sensitively placed, you know, a fairly sizable building with its short end to the road, so that its mass, you know, really is, is quite well mitigated by the pitch and--
There are, there are examples that the Design Review Board would point to in town that have pitched roofs and really are out of scale with other things in town, and because of the pitched roof, so, no, I appreciate the, the flat roof, I really do. So, thank you very much, both of you. All right. Acton Cleanup Week is the first item on Selectmen's business. Mr. Snyder Grant, I don't know if you have anything to say, or, I think that originally the thought was put it on consent, but this has expanded from one day to a week, and it's been very, I think it's been very actually popular and very effective in cleaning up our town. It's appalling how much stuff accumulates on the sides of streets. I think the town's involvement, this is really to authorize the town to be involved as it has in pass in providing places to pick up bags and drop off full bags of trash and, and collect it and haul it off, right? But you can fill in the details. I know you don't have all the details for the program, but, while the mic is working up there.
So far, so good. So this is Jim Snyder Grant from West Acton, and as you mentioned, Acton's had a cleanup day or week for more than 20 years. I, I wonder if you could ask the people who are talking to be talking less, there's a lot of echoing in here.
Mr. Johnkis and Ms. Fredericks, if you would like, if you need to have a conversation, could you take it in the hallway? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm happy to announce that this year, Green Acton is working with a, a new local partner, the Asian American Civic Engagement Alliance, which you'll hear referred to as AACCEA, to run Cleanup Week. So we're here to describe what the activity will be about this year and to ask for your support in declaring this a town event, so that we can have access to town support as we have in the past. And I just, I'm thrilled to be able to introduce to you three people, three high school students, Brian Lee, a sophomore at ABRHS, and Kate Jong and Shelley Day, who are both juniors, who are all youth members of the AACCEA, who can tell you just a tiny bit more about Acton Cleanup Week. Thank you.
Great, always glad to hear from young people getting involved.
Hello, my name is Brian Lee, and I'm a sophomore at Acton Boxer Regional Junior, Acton Boxer Regional High School. This year, I'll be one of the co-youth leaders to help Green Acton run this town-wide event. Many members of AACCEA have been involved with Acton Cleanup Day for a few years, and all of us value the tradition and think it's a great way to get residents involved in making Acton a better and cleaner place for all. Last year, we had great success by extending the event from one day to one week. Our participation rate doubled, and we have many businesses, community groups, and high schools actively involved in the event. This year, we plan to continue the weekly event and extend it one more day to include an additional Saturday. As usual, we'll be seeking help from various groups in town to clean up during the entire week of April 21st to April 29th. Because of the success and simplicity of running a decentralized and self-paced, week-long event via the new actoncleanup.info website, we are dropping the complexities of having staff tables and centralized trash pickup. Volunteers will be able to sign up for streets to pick up at the website and drop off any trash they collect at any rec area that has a trash barrel. We will be politicizing the event at the school and through civic groups through email and other means, and we look forward to having support from the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you, or, do you have anything else? Do, do your companions here, do you have something, they're women, I'd like to hear from the women, goodness, come on!
If you guys have any questions, we'd be willing to answer them.
Okay. Would you recite the website again, so that people can, you know, I don't know if there's anything there yet, maybe it's too early, but might as well get people familiar with it.
Actoncleanup.info, which is A-C-T-O-N-C-L-E-A-N-L.
You know what, I think we're gonna, we're gonna get that on our town website, because I think that's too complicated for me to remember, so, maybe our secretary, our executive secretary can write it down, but anyhow, but thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just, no questions, but just a comment, I wanted to thank both Green Acton for taking this on and for the, let me get the, the AACCA for joining in this, and for you as students for getting involved, and I just think it's great to see how this has sort of morphed over the years and that you're continuing to kind of think about ways to make it easier for people to be involved in Cleanup Day or Cleanup Week. As Janet said, it really is amazing how much litter you end up seeing. I was driving the other day and happened to see somebody walking by who just, was just walking and just blew his nose and threw the tissue on the ground, and I, you know, it was like, I, you know, you see it and you, you don't think about people actually doing that, but obviously, there's a lot of trash around and, and people, some people seem to think that the world is their trash can, unfortunately. So, thank you for being the people who do not think that, and for being willing to clean up after the people who do, and for making all of this happen. So, just wanted to say we very much support your work and appreciate the time you're putting into this.
There was an old commercial, and I date myself, because I remember it, but it used to be an anti-litter commercial, and, and somebody would throw something out the window, and it would come flying back at the person. I always want, wish that really could happen, you know, it's like flying carpets and all the rest of it, but any other comments or questions from the board? No? All right, should we make a motion to, to approve the town's support of this venture?
I'll move to, for the Board of Selectmen to approve the town's support of Acton Cleanup Week from April 21st to 29th.
Second.
Katie Moose and Ching Sun seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Thank you very much, and look forward to cleaning up the town when the snow melts, right? That's like, that's a crucial part. Okay, the next item is pretty straightforward. It's a Town Manager Search Board Authorization for Negotiation of Agreement with Consultant in Development and Process Schedule for Finalist Candidate Screening. This is essentially, there's an email that I received from MRI, which has been providing consulting services to the Town Manager Search Committee for the past months, and the, the idea is that the Board of Selectmen should make use of that same consultant to support the board as it moves forward with its part of the Town Manager Search, which is interviewing the finalists. We do have a list of finalists, they are still in the hands of the Town Manager Search Committee, because as soon as anything comes to the board, the information goes public, and we're not ready to start interviewing them. So, what I'm proposing is to have Katie, as vice chairman, work with me, talk, we've got a preliminary proposal, we want to finalize it for their services, and then what we want to do is work with them to develop a more detailed plan with a schedule, with specific dates for interviews. We're planning to use the consultants to inform the finalists of what is going on, including what the interview date or dates will be, so that they will stay in the loop. We have some very good candidates, they are obviously of interest to other communities. There are a number of communities that are just starting their searches, we do not want to lose people who are, are among the finalist's list, so, all I'm looking for here is a vote, a motion and vote of the board to authorize Katie and me to talk, work with the consultants to develop an agreement, and then to also develop a plan for our interviewing process, which will start very soon after town meeting ends. And I realize, Mr. Chang, that you're not even gonna be involved in this, but you get to participate in authorizing, authorizing us to move forward, but, any questions or comments from the two of you who don't know what this is about? Well, is, are you willing to make motion and approve Katie's and my doing this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ching Sun moves, and Joan seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Thank you very much. And then, okay. You know what, before, before we get to Article 26, why don't we go through the consent agenda quickly, so that we don't forget it? Consent agenda, item five, Habitat for Humanity Request for Acton Community Housing Corporation CPC Funds. Item six, request to dispose of obsolete items at Acton Memorial Library. Item seven, accept gift, council on aging, gift totaling $700 from Friends of the Acton COA to be used for building furnishings at the senior center. Item eight, accept gift, council of aging, gift of an undisclosed amount from the Edna M. Story Revocable Trust. And item nine, committee appointment, Lucy Kirchner, Associate Member, Water Resources Advisory Committee. Congratulations, Lucy.
We'll make a motion to approve consent to items five through nine.
Second.
Katie Moose and Joan seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining. All right, and now to the item that everybody's been waiting for, item four on the Selectmen's business article 26, Water Supply Agreement, Great Road. Council is here to provide, provide an overview, and I think that I probably, I'll let him do the introduction, it will be, there will be an opportunity for the board to make preliminary questions or comments, but then, we're obviously gonna open it up to the audience to participate out of curiosity. How many people here have comments with regard to two-way water agreement? Okay, because I'm gonna have to try to control how long the comments go, although this is the last bit of business, so.
I don't have a question.
You have to go to the microphone.
I don't have a comment, but I have a question. I don't understand the implications of--
Are you, if you're going into substance, I think you should wait until council has finished the introduction, okay?
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Ross.
Okay, thank you. So are we focusing on the article this evening, or you want me to get right into the agreement, which is what the article relates to primarily, right? So why don't I walk through the agreement, give a little context about where this came from, and I want to explain also why it is, you know, you're seeing this agreement now, just recently, only a couple of weeks in front of town meeting. We know that it's a very compressed timeframe, there is a reason for that, it's unfortunate, but it's sort of the position that we found ourselves in after our remand hearing back in November. So, this agreement does really spin out of settlement discussions associated with the special permit for Concorde's proposed treatment plan. All of you here, I think, are familiar with the remand process that occurred back in November. There was a modified decision that was presented at that public hearing. The number of affirmative votes needed to adopt that modified decision weren't secured, so the litigation related to the original special permit, and the conditions that Concorde was challenging, was put back on track. So we had a litigation schedule that was put in place by the court. The Acton Selectmen and Concorde representatives worked early on at the conclusion of that process, to try to get a sense for whether we're focusing 100% on litigation, or whether we should be, you know, trying to come up with some sort of resolution that'll avoid the need to litigate these various issues. And, you know, to get to the point of determining whether or not additional settlement efforts were worth it, you know, these aren't nimble discussions and decisions to make. There were a number of executive sessions that the Selectmen had-- were a number of executive sessions that the Selectmen held, a lot of communications and discussions, and from those, this approach of addressing some of the issues that had been addressed in the special permit and putting them, and trying to address them in a separate agreement with Concord, that framework sort of spun out of those settlement discussions. So, the settlement discussions then were focused on special permit language, but also the contents and the language of a side agreement, really focused on the Route 2A water supply needs, and also just regional planning and cooperation more generally. So, there were, you know, there were discussions that were, that occurred over several weeks, and it wasn't until recently that we started zeroing in on an agreement that the Acton Selectmen and the Concord representatives felt like they were gonna be able to find an agreement on, and at that point, we were looking at the town meeting schedule, the litigation schedule, and Selectman Chang's term period coming up here at the end of, the end of March. So, Selectman Chang's been involved with this from the beginning, and we thought if we were gonna be able to pull things together, it made sense to try to do it on the schedule that would allow him to participate in it, and as well, the Selectmen, early on, came to the view that this agreement, if we can get it to, if we can get it approved by the Selectmen and the Concord representatives, is something that they would want to present at town meeting and put it out for a vote at town meeting. So, that was, that was sort of the background to the, what led to this, and the time constraints were unfortunate, but I think that we're, hopefully, you're gonna get enough information on this agreement, and you've got a couple of weeks before town meeting, and if people are engaged, you'll understand enough, I think, to make an informed decision at that point in time. So, what I'd like to do now is just walk through, not every provision, but the key points of the agreement. Starting with the parties, right on page one, you'll see that the Acton Water District is not a party to this agreement, that was intentional, there was a lot of debate about whether or not it made sense for them to be a party, the importance of that, I think, is that in Acton, the Acton Water District is your main, it's the entity that supplies water for Acton residents. They are not a party to this, and they are very explicitly not bound by this agreement. And I think that's important, because there's nothing in this agreement that affects the ability of the Acton Water District to pursue whatever rights it wants to pursue legislatively, regulatory-wise, et cetera. It's not a party, it's not bound by the agreement. There are a number of whereas clauses, it's really background, but we were very careful in the wording and drafting of this document not to say something that would interpret the 1884 Act, which is the act by which Concord was provided rights to withdraw water from Nagak Pond. So, you'll see recitals to the act, and then at the end of the, the end of the agreement, there's a, there's a provision, it's called the Reservation of Rights, Paragraph 7 on Page 11, other than, it's explicitly provided in this agreement, nothing in this agreement is intended to diminish, limit, or advance the parties' respective rights under the 1884 Act to use Nagak Pond. So, we were very careful not to affect, one way or the other, the respective rights of the parties under the 1884 Act. You'll see in the whereas clauses, the Selectmen's concerns with respect to entering into this sort of agreement without town meeting support, because as you know, or you might remember, there were non-binding resolutions adopted at the annual town meeting last year that directed the Selectmen to pursue legislative clarifications related to the 1884 Act, and to start the process of securing rights to withdraw water from Nagak Pond. The Selectmen, as I, I don't want to put words into the Selectmen's mouths, but as I have sort of come to understand the views generally from the board, there doesn't appear to be justification right now, or any compelling need coming from the Acton Water District or otherwise, to start a regulatory process to secure rights to Nagak Pond. So, what that would involve, if you wanted to actually, if the Acton Water District wanted to start withdrawing water from Nagak Pond, they would have to submit a variety of applications with Mass DEP, and that would open up a, probably a very prolonged regulatory process, and one in which they would have to demonstrate, among other things, that they actually needed the water from Nagak Pond. So, you know, the one viewpoint is that doing that right now might be premature, but despite that, there was a non-binding resolution directing the Selectmen to start that process now, so out of respect for that, they wanted to present this agreement to the town meeting for, for a supporting vote. Getting to the terms of the agreement, well, actually, let me get one more whereas clause, at the bottom of page three, there's a whereas clause that sort of summarizes the concept here in terms of Concord's commitment. So, Concord, what they're committing to doing through this agreement is to continue supplying water to the Great Road residents whose property front on their water main, but also to supply water to future expansion and, and future new uses on those properties. The, the commitment, though, is based upon their view, their willingness to do it is based on the view that they are gonna continue to retain the rights that they currently have to Nagak Pond. So, you're gonna see in the agreement a number of events called triggering events, which would allow them to terminate that commitment in the event something happens that would constrain their existing rights. And if those triggering events occur, we're basically gonna be back, this, this agreement at their option would be terminated, and we'd basically be in the same place that we are right now, which is that they're providing water to the Concord, to the Acton residents currently, with no documented legal commitment to doing that. You know, that said, if they tried to terminate tomorrow, we probably could prevent that from happening for some period of time, but they don't have a documented legal commitment to do it. So, if they decided not to continue doing it, the Acton Water District would have to build a water main out there and supply it themselves. The estimated cost for that, off-the-cuff estimate from the water district folks, was three and a half to seven million dollars, maybe, maybe more, it's a rough estimate. Getting to the terms of the agreement, the first paragraph on page five, this agreement is written to be executed by the Selectmen prior to the town meeting vote, as well as to be signed by the Concord representatives prior to the town meeting vote, but it only takes effect if the town meeting vote supports the warrant article. If the town meeting votes no on that, then that paragraph makes it clear that this deal is null and void, it does not take effect, it never existed. So, don't be nervous about assigning ahead of time, it's written so that it doesn't take effect unless the vote comes in supporting it. With respect to the term, you know, Concord obviously was looking for a much longer term for this agreement in terms of what they're hoping to get out of it, we've proposed a 20-year term, and that's based partly, and you're gonna hear from, I think, one, at least one of the water commissioners tonight, but it's, the 20-year term was based on our understanding of sort of a reasonable forecast from the Acton Water District staff folks that for that time period, they didn't expect any reason to go to start pursuing, you know, or withdrawing water from Nagak Pond. That could change, and we know that, and this wouldn't, I don't, I don't think this agreement would present any real obstacles to them doing that, since it's not binding on them in particular, but that's, the 20-year term was in part based upon some comfort that we had gotten from them, that they didn't project the need to withdraw water from Nagak Pond at that time, they'll speak to that issue. There's also a provision that would authorize a five-year extension, but only if the Acton Water District, as you're coming into the end of the 20-year term, was still of the view that it didn't need to withdraw water from Nagak Pond. If during the 20-year term, Acton Water District says, hey, we actually do need to get into Nagak Pond, and we think we need to start exercising those rights, then that five-year extension will not happen. The Concord's commitment to supply water to the Acton residents starts at the bottom of page six, Paragraph 3, the provisions defines the service area being the properties along their existing water main, the commitment is to provide water to existing users of future new and expanded uses. They reiterate their point that they're only willing to commit to this as long as their water withdrawal rights to Nagak Pond are maintained, really on all fronts, including the regulatory fronts with DEP. They've committed here to treating the Acton residents uniformly with Concord residents, some towns in these situations charge a premium if they're providing service to another town, but they've committed not to do that here. I should probably say, they haven't committed to this yet, they're, they're having their own meeting tonight, and they're reviewing exactly the same document that we're reviewing, so we'll all know tomorrow whether they've agreed to this or not. Paragraph four, start, outlines the commitment by the Acton Board of Selectmen, so there's two key components to this, the first one is the most important, I think, and it's labeled forbearance agreement. So, what the Acton Board of Selectmen would do through this agreement is they would agree not to actively seek or support authoritative authorization to withdraw water from Nagak Pond, they wouldn't petition the legislators, legislature, legislature to modify the 1884 Act, or pursue judicial determinations interpreting that act, or apply for a Water Management Act permit. Again, nothing here, this is a forbearance agreement by the Selectmen, none of this prevents the Water District from doing these things, and nothing prevents anyone else from doing these things either, although there are triggering events that would be triggered, we'll get to that in a second. So, it'd be the Selectmen agreeing basically not to actively be doing something that would constrain Concord's existing rights to withdraw water from Nagak Pond. The second part of it is to establish a permit review process, one of the frustrations, I think, at our end and Concord's end is that there's no process for getting the Concord Water Department involved in the local permitting here, the Acton properties are in Acton, they appear before the Acton boards, they get their local permits, and then they go to Concord, you know, asking for water, and there's frustration that they weren't involved in the permitting process as they would normally be if we were in the same town, so there's a provision there to provide for that process. Paragraph five defines the termination option and triggering events, and basically what you're gonna see here is that if there's anything that happens that causes, you know, a change in Concord's legislative rights or regulatory rights associated with their withdrawal of water from Nagak Pond, they're gonna have the election to just terminate this deal. If they terminate their commitment to supplying water, it basically puts you right where you are currently, which is that they, they're doing it, but they don't have a legal documented legal commitment to doing it. So, the triggering events would include Acton Selectmen violating or breaching their commitment not to support legislative changes, et cetera, breaching that forbearance commitment that I mentioned, legislation being introduced that would seek authorization for Acton or Littleton to withdraw water from the pond, applications by either Acton or the Acton Water District to withdraw water from Nagak Pond. And then we've made it clear that, you know, we know that Littleton and Acton are currently in a little bit of a, they're wrangling over Littleton's interest in putting a groundwater well near the pond, you know, Littleton has expressed some interest themselves in pursuing withdrawals of water from Nagak Pond, I don't know enough about that situation to know if that's posturing, or if that's a decision that's made, but if Littleton were to actually secure a water management withdrawal permit from DEP, that would be a triggering event, and Concord would have the right then to terminate their supply commitment under this agreement. The termination, if a triggering event occurs, requires Concord to provide a one-year notice. Right now, they could, they could put us on notice of terminating a water supply at any point in time, and we'd have to go to court to secure enough time to be able to build our own main out there, or the Acton Water District give them time to build the main out there, but this, under this agreement, they'd have at least a one-year notice prior to that termination happening. There are also some more general regional planning coordination provisions here, Paragraph 6 on page 10, requiring Acton and Concord to participate actively and in good faith in periodic meetings to discuss the mutual needs, short-term and long-term, water supply needs of the different communities, and to work cooperatively in, in good faith with each other in the event that either town faces water emergency. And I, and I know that these are just words, but we thought it was important to have the parties commit in writing to actively talking to each other, you know, water supply is a regional issue, and the people who are gonna, you know, rather than just going at it behind each other's backs and trying to work it out unilaterally, the ideal way to deal with it is cooperatively, and so, the hope here was that this would be a step in that direction, and get the parties committed to working together on these issues and document that here. There are a lot of issues, water supply issues, that this agreement doesn't address, you know, obviously, there's nothing in this agreement that contemplates what happens if, you know, 15, 20 years down the road, we actually do have a, you know, an imminent need to get water from Nagak Pond. Concord's not committing to, we didn't deal with that issue in this, in this agreement, this is not a comprehensive regional planning water supply issue, it's a very, it's very focused, and it's, and the reason for that is, it's, it comes out of this special permit process, which is a really confined, it's a confined posture. So, we really were trying to deal with the issues that had come up during that special permit process, we didn't attempt to wrangle with all the larger water supply issues that I hope, I think the board hopes, the Acton Water District and the Selectmen and the Concord representatives and Littleton representatives are gonna be wrangling with going forward. They're not simple discussions, they're not the kind of discussions that you're gonna resolve in three months, those discussions take, they take time. So, for the posture that we were in, this is the agreement that we've come up with, and is that, did I cover it?
Thank you, Counsel. I, I don't know if board members have any preliminary comments or questions. Katie?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, obviously, as Jeff noted, we've been talking about this for many, many weeks, but just my comment, so a couple of things, just based on some emails that we've seen, I just wanted to clarify that this is not separate from, but it is not addressing the permit for the water treatment plant, that is a separate issue, there's a permit in place, as you, as you know, and the conditions of which are being discussed in litigation and/or negotiations. So, the permit itself is not, you know, the, that, we are not taking that to town meeting at all, it's just this water supply agreement on 2A, and again, as Jeff noted, the thought in, in separating this as well was that this really isn't an issue that we thought should be addressed in the permit, but should be addressed because it is a need and, and an issue that currently we have a number of residences and businesses served by the Concord Water District along 2A that, you know, could not be at Concord's when we, you know, believe that we, we would be able to get some, you know, that wouldn't be able to turn off the water tomorrow, but if they chose to, you know, exert and say that they no longer want to supply it, we think that we would fairly quickly, either the town or the Water District would have to provide a main. So, the idea is to, you know, put an agreement in place that guarantees that they will continue to provide that water, and in the meantime, we're saying we don't foresee an imminent need to use the waters of Nagak Pond, so it does not make sense, as Jeff said, right now, to assert our rights under the 1884 Act, we in no way give up those rights, that still is maintained, so that if in the future, if in five years from now, we foresee that we do need that, either, as Jeff said, a group that's not a party to this agreement, the, the Water District or the public could assert those rights, or frankly, the Board of Selectmen could, it's just, it's a triggering event, so the Board of Selectmen would make that decision, understanding that they are triggering the, the agreement to be nullified, but we have that ability to do that, so that, I also saw some comments that people felt like this gave just Concord sort of an out or triggering events, but frankly, those triggering events go both ways. So, it gives the Acton Board of Selectmen the ability, if we say in three, five, six, seven, however many years, we are now foreseeing that we will need to use Nagak Pond, then we can assert our rights and start going through what we believe would potentially be a lengthy legislative and/or regulatory process to access Nagak Pond, and we just do that knowing that we come back essentially to the situation where we are now, as Jeff noted, where Concord is not required in any way to provide us, to provide water along 2A, except that they have to give us a year's notice, so it actually gives us a little bit better of a situation than we have now. So, my feeling is that this puts us in, you know, a more secure situation... So my feeling is that this puts us in, you know, a more secure situation for the residents and businesses along 2A. I know people feel like that's not a lot, but there are a number that are served. There are some that have had to make decisions about what they can do with their properties. I know one instance where they had to put in housing instead of businesses. We talk about wanting to try to encourage more, you know, business development in town and that was an instance where it couldn't happen because they couldn't get a water hookup from Concord that would allow for that. So this provides that, you know, sort of assurance for those residences and businesses along 2A and it also gives us the ability to exit this agreement when we need to and when we see an actual need to use Nagog Pond. So for those reasons, I am supportive of this agreement.
Joan or Ching Sung, any comments?
You want to go first, Joan, or it's up to you?
Go ahead, Joan.
Jeff, under termination, the second one, Littleton, if the headline in the paper is about Littleton wanting to withdraw water from Nagog, this doesn't work.
Sorry, Littleton is very active right now on that front, given this little dispute and situation that I mentioned. So it's possible that if this is supported tonight in a town meeting, that Littleton, through this process that they're in, does something that triggers the option to terminate. With respect to the permitting issue, the triggering event is them actually securing a permit. And in my assessment, for them to actually get a permit to withdraw from Nagog Pond is something that's going to take years, probably at the staff level of DEP, and then probably more years to resolve any appeal that I would expect Concord to file with respect to that. But they might also manage to get legislation introduced that amends or modifies the 1884 Act. And if they do that, yes, that'll give Concord the right to terminate this deal, putting us back where we are today. And that's consistent with the concept, which is they're okay with this commitment, but if their existing rights are going to be changed, they're not, they don't know if they're okay with it because it depends how they're changed, right? So they just can't commit, they're not comfortable committing to that. So you're right. Littleton could proceed in a way that results in a triggering event and this may be, in that case, it could be a short-term agreement or it could not. We don't know.
Anything else? Okay. Ching Sung?
So I guess I wanted to sort of speak to the, at least my personal thought process behind this agreement and why, and why this is coming up now and sort of what the, what the general idea was. I think it's important, as Jeff has emphasized, but I want to emphasize again, the confined nature of this agreement. We were very careful when drafting this agreement to ensure that it doesn't limit the ability of the Acton Board of Selectmen or the Acton Water District to act in the future with respect to the rights surrounding Nagog Pond or any other water supply issues. So you will note that, for example, like this agreement doesn't commit the Acton Water District in any way for building that pipe out to 2A. Because at the end of the day, if this agreement doesn't go forward, we are just ending up where we are today. And so what this agreement essentially does is table any discussions surrounding Nagog Pond and any sort of official status thereof for a period of time in exchange for Concord agreeing to legally commit to their water supply, to the water they're already supplying on 2A and, you know, any, and the small, and, you know, a reasonable expansion of that service based off of different build-out projections, which you'll find in that agreement as well. There's terms for expanded service. This is an agreement that's extremely confined in scope and really does not prevent any independent action on the, on the side of residents or the Acton Water District in, in sort of working towards further clarification of the status of Nagog Pond and those water rights so long as, you know, nothing is officially introduced, so to speak. So you can talk to your representatives, they can do background research, all that stuff, you know, and, you know, I think that that's fine and probably in fact something that should be done, you know, so that eventually when this does come back, you know, their, Acton is, is, is prepared to, is to prepare to, it basically is prepared to enter into those discussions, you know, as necessary. You know, I don't know whether or not this agreement will last its full term and, you know, I don't really think that, I think that it's responsive to conditions that could easily change, right? You know, right now, we have Littleton attempting to move forward with an application to withdraw water from Nagog Pond. Like Jeff said, not sure if that's posturing or if it's, you know, an actual real bona fide attempt to do that. You know, and so really I think it's, it would behoove the residents of Acton to view this as kind of an extremely confined agreement that's designed to, that's really designed not to limit anything, but just to provide sort of a small, a small exchange, you know, to help, to help really solidify and secure, at least for, in the short term, the supply for 2A. Once again, I don't think this is a long-term solution. It may last 20 years, it may not, but at the end of the day, it's not a full solution. It's just a stopgap measure and I think that it's important for the residents to understand that.
Thank you. I don't have much to add to what my colleagues have said. I frankly, having, we've spent two years dealing with this project and then dealing with the decision that we initially issued, which was a year ago, and the conditions that we included in the decision that really prompted Concord to file its appeal. This particular, the water service on 2A, having been a pretty important condition for a number of us to, and to provide support for the original decision, and it continues to be an issue that we're concerned about, the decision aside. I do think that we have not heard people who have residences or businesses on 2A here. We've heard of a lot of other people, but it's our responsibility as the Board of Selectmen representing the entire town and not just the people who come to our meetings, to look out for the interests of a lot of people who may not actually be expressing themselves at our meetings. And that includes a lot of the people who are served by Concord Water District on Route 2A. So, you know, I think that it is, we could, if the, the point of all the triggering agreements, I mean, triggering provisions is people have been saying, well, that's too favorable to Concord. As Katie says, you know, triggering event terminates the contract for both sides. Neither side is bound when the contract terminates and we're back to where we are essentially now, except that there's a provision for one-year notice. So we have a little bit more notice than we would otherwise under the current circumstances. And I think that it is, it is about as carefully crafted, even though I know that there are people in the audience who will disagree, that to provide for the interests of both sides without tying either side's hands, understanding that there's a lot of uncertainty. Nobody can predict the future. We don't know what might happen in the future, but these are all based on reasonable projections and assumptions. And so there's a lot, lawyers are very good at inserting into agreements a lot of provisions, wiggle room, to allow people to, more flexibility when they enter into agreements. And that is what this agreement has a lot of. So, you know, when people look at particular provisions and say, well, you know, you don't have any control over some of the triggering provisions, you don't have any control over Littleton, that's true, but if it came to pass that there were something triggered, Littleton did something to trigger, as I said, the agreement ends and we're, we get one-year's notice of the termination. So, and with that, we can start preparing. Anyhow, I don't want really to talk anymore. I would like to hear from audience members. I know that the people are very eager to talk, so if my colleagues have nothing more, I would like to open it up to the audience, but I would like to start with Water District representative. I'd like to hear, one of you is going to speak. There was an open meeting law issue. One of you is going to speak and, and so I'd like to start with whichever one of you is supposed to be speaking on behalf of the Water District. With Lynn, you can, you can, you can go to the mic while it's still, or you, you know, if you want, it doesn't matter. If that, if that mic sort of falters, then I think the hand mic might be still up there have.
I'm sure it is.
Just don't step on the wires. They seem to be very touchy. I just.
I'll do my best. I'm Leonard Phillips. I've been a water commissioner in Acton since 1982 with a few years off in the late 80s. I really would like to begin with a statement that will hopefully change the tenor of this debate. And that statement is a statement of respect for the late Brewster Conant, who's just recently passed from us, whose spirit of generosity and sharing for the benefit of the town was demonstrated by gifting land for citing the Conant Well and many other things. I sat next to Brewster at our Christmas event. I remember him vividly. And with that spirit, which I hope I can invoke on this meeting of cooperation and civic responsibility, I hope I can, in my simple way, cut through the legalistic long hand and provide a shorthand statement that will serve as a topical paragraph for speakers who will follow me on this floor. I'm very emotionally involved in this, as you probably can tell. This resolution, as I understand it, regarding the Great Road water supply does not adequately reflect the position of the Acton Water District Commissioners. I've heard time and time again that we have testified that we have no immediate need for Nagog Pond as a water source. However, listen carefully, folks. This does not mean that we would not consider utilizing Nagog Pond as a water source for the next 20 or 25 years or for a longer or shorter period of time. In fact, as we're probably all well aware, there is a real and present threat to 40% of our water supply represented by the Assabut well field currently in the Superfund site that is threatening those wells even as we speak and debate this issue about Nagog tonight. I would like to prepare all who are within the sound of my voice for a period in which it is possible that those Assabut wells might be constrained to the point where we might have to shut them off. It's possible. So to say that we have testified we have no immediate need for 20 to 25 years simply does not fit the facts as we know them as a Water District and as the town and those present have learned from newspapers and so on. Nagog Pond is a delicate and finite resource of water. We support and we've stated to the selectmen that as a Water District, we support monitoring and the sharing of data on Nagog Pond's use, withdrawals and environmental impact, something that Concord has not agreed to do. We also support regionalization in allocating Nagog Pond as a water resource. As I understand it, this issue boils down to a question of supplying water to water takers for the next 20 years with a rider of five, possible rider of five years, if you agree to this permit. If you fully consider the Water District's position, and we're not a party to this, although Concord has agreed, interestingly, to inform us if a trigger event occurs and so on, we find that very pleasant and we're surprised. It's a good neighbor. We do not support this article. And now I open the floor to others who will make further statements. Thank you for your time.
Hold on. I want to see if my Board has any questions or comments. No?
Yes.
Yep. Joan, go ahead.
Lynn, if the Water District is responsible for supplying water to this area of 2A, what would be the time involved and the money?
Yeah, it's difficult to, you know, to project that kind of, those kinds of numbers with any reasonable accuracy, but I can give you a rule of thumb. It costs approximately a million dollars a mile to install a water main, according to District Manager Chris Allen. You can apply that to the distance from the nearest water connection to these, you know, to these homes and businesses. In terms of the time, I would say a period of several years, possibly between environmental impact reports and permitting and, you know, planning, engineering and so on. Several years to do that. I really can't be more specific than that, Joan, but I appreciate your question. Thank you.
Katie?
Sure. So Lynn, if the Water District Commissioners don't think that this is reasonable, do you have a plan then in place or will be thinking about a plan to build that water main to provide service along 2A and what's your plan to do that? I think again, you know, our reason for doing this is because we think this gives us more time and protection and, you know, some amount of certainty that Concord will continue to provide water along 2A where there is no main from Acton until we, you know, have a need for, to assert our rights to Nagog Pond. So unless the Acton Water District wants to assert those rights in the next, you know, six months, then at least we're getting a few months out of, out of this. And so I guess what's the plan then? Because, you know, our fear is very much that Concord will tomorrow say, if we don't support this, Concord will tomorrow say that they are putting notice that they will terminate their service along 2A, which we understand we could probably, you know, will have to go to court to get, you know, them to continue to provide it while the Acton Water District, you know, builds a pipeline, but we'll have to go to court to do that and we'll need the Acton Water District to begin putting together a plan to provide that service.
I guess I have several things to say. One is that supplying roughly 61,000 gallons per day is a very small percentage of the carrying capacity and planned conveyance of water to Concord from Nagog. I invoke Brewster Conant's spirit because I would hope that New England's spirit is also evident and still extant in Concord. A good neighbor is not one who shuts off water to other neighbors when it isn't necessary for their own use. Now, in terms of your question about planning, we have discussed, but not specifically planned, a supply to serve these customers. We've penciled it, we've estimated, estimated it, but it's our hope that Concord will continue to be the good neighbor it has been and will continue to supply these folks on 2A. I have heard that Concord plans to rest all of its wells once Nagog is, this plant is built and so on. I find that to be interesting in view of holding hostage the water takers along 2A for a tiny proportion of that water flow. I'm just shocked, frankly. With regard to the triggering events, we will actually be worse off, as I see it, than we are currently because the certainty of shut-off within a year is not something that we have to face at this time. So I find that statement to be worth reexamining. Again, I'm just a geologist, I'm not a lawyer and, you know, I just, I just see the sharing of the common resource between our towns, our three towns, to be something that it's a reasonable thing to do. our three towns, to be something that is a reasonable thing to do, something that we should continue to work toward amicably and with neighborly relations and not feel that any of our town in Acton is being held hostage for the purposes of another town's benefit. That's how I see this in the long term and from 20,000 feet.
I have a question. In all the years that Concord has sort of voluntarily been providing service along 2A to those properties in Great Road, why is it that the Water District, how, well, what effort has the Water District made to talk to Concord about coming to some sort of agreement about the service along that road? Katie asked about what plans have you made in the event that service terminates there by Concord, providing the coverage, but there's, the coverage has been provided for a long time and it's sort of inertia, I guess, that, that nobody's bothered to bring up the subject. I don't know what kinds of discussions go on over the years, but I'm wondering what efforts have been made to try to formalize that water service arrangement.
Yeah, I frankly don't know the history of this.
Why hasn't there been any?
Well, I'm sure when that service was initiated many years ago, that there were discussions. I wasn't part of that. I don't know if anyone in this room was. There's a history there that I can only guess at and we can only guess at. But I'm convinced there was some kind of a quid pro quo that was involved. I just don't know. We felt, we've never called that into question because it's been going on for so many years. I guess it's, you know, a question that we've taken up lately. And as I say, we've looked at it. We've, we're penciling in alternatives. We hope we don't have to do that because the cost would have to be met and bonds and costs and so on. We're fully prepared and technically capable to do it. We, we serve 6,600 water takers around town. We pump, you know, 600 million gallons of water a year. There's, you know, it doesn't, it's not beyond the capability of the district to supply these folks. The questionable nature of why we would have to do it in such an exigent way, I think, is, is the debate that we're, we're looking at now. I don't understand the 20-year period and why that's all of a sudden sacrosanct. I don't understand where that came from and why is it finite? And why isn't it, you know, 50 years? Why isn't it 75 years? I have no idea. But it just seems to me to be, I don't use the word capricious. I mean, it just seemed, I don't know the basis for it, but it doesn't seem to have one in any rational basis that I can think of as an individual or as a commissioner. But rest assured, the Water District is fully prepared to provide water to these folks as they may require in the future.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, you're talking about capricious and everything and I just think that inertia, you know, there's a situation, there's a water service area in Acton that clearly isn't being supplied by the Water District, which has expanded. It started out in one part of Acton and gradually expanded to cover 95% of Acton with my property being one of the ones that's in the 5%. But, and it's just that it's curious to me that there's a stretch, yeah, admittedly it's served by another town, but, you know, with absolutely no formal agreement. And I, you know, I just sort of, I guess I expect a lot of people who are in the profession and, you know, think that would bother people, that there's this uncertainty, you'd want to sort of pin it down.
Sure, sure.
For both towns, so.
Yeah, there's a fourth dimensional component here that we're all aware of also, that the 1884 agreement was promulgated long before the Water District existed and that an understanding or understandings between Concord and Acton that were reached at that time are lost in the fog of time or the fog of history. I wish I could answer your question about why there was never an agreement. For all I know, there was one that was never signed. I just don't know. I just don't know. And further research, you know, through our annual reports may divulge that. I'm not a student of reports going back many, many years, although I seem to remember one that talked about the very first automobile accident hitting a hydrant in, I think it was 1919 or something. I remember that one. But, you know, as far as this, this situation, I don't know. But again, I'll iterate that the Acton Water District, although it started in a very limited way to service West Acton, southwest area of town, has indeed grown. And we have actually pushed the envelope on technology when, when, when needed, establishing much higher levels, or I should say actually numerically lower levels of contamination that required by either the state or the federal government when threatened by the W.R. Grace Superfund situation. We are, we have begun research and development on a plan to, to treat the water, to remove 1-4-dioxine, which is a threat emanating from, from.
Nuclear metals.
Yeah, nuclear metals and so on. So we're, we try to stay ahead of the technical envelope as well as the supply envelope. And it's just odd that, and an odd coincidence, that the same, the same well field, once threatened from the north, is now threatened from the south. I find that almost Shakespearean and it's, you know, in its nature of, you know, of symmetry.
Of course, the nuclear metal site is not, it's not as if Concord created that, you know, to do evil to Acton's wells.
Of course not.
I have heard people in Acton suggest that it's Concord's fault.
Well, you know.
It's the fault of whoever ran that property, you know, and, and the, the procedures that existed in the old days where you just dumped.
Exactly.
Stuff into the ground.
Exactly.
That's what happened with the W.R. Grace.
We are all.
It was acceptable operation, which, you know, seems hideous to us today, but it was just routine.
I'm sure people weren't aware of the missibility of 1-4-dioxine with water at the time. And we certainly weren't aware that the river was not a water divide as, as we had thought for many years, but it's superposed on glacial materials that are perhaps 130, 140 feet of depth there. And we didn't know that until very recently. Had that been known by the nuclear metals folks, perhaps they might have operated differently. I don't know. But the point is that, that the Water District, in dealing with these very real threats and real facts of nature, you know, is fully prepared to grapple with them and to resolve the situation as we have resolved exigent situations in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Phillips?
I guess my first question to you is, is, so is the fact that at this current moment, do you foresee a need in the future to use Nagog Pond in the immediate future?
Mr. Chang, I would ask you, when you sign an agreement for liability insurance on your automobile, do you expect to need it?
Yes.
Than a day or two?
Yes.
Well, in that case, all I can say is that we do expect, and I've stated very candidly, we do expect as a very real possibility, the loss, perhaps temporary loss, hopefully, of 40% of our water supply any day now. 1-4-dioxine has already been found in the raw water, although at a lower percentage than, than is allowed by state or federal laws. It's already there and it's just a question now of, again, that time thing, that fourth dimension and the, also the velocity and the nature of the ground materials. I don't want to, you know, I tried to be, I tried to give you a decent metaphor, but I don't expect to need insurance tomorrow personally. I'm a better driver than that. And I've been riding a motorcycle for, hmm, over 50 years and I don't expect to need that insurance either, never have. I'm sorry that you feel that you're going to need it tomorrow.
I always expect to need every, every coverage that I have tomorrow. That's why I have it.
Well, that's, that I think is a rather pessimistic view, but I, I take that accordingly. And I suppose that's one way of looking at it. I'm a little more optimistic than that. But at any rate, we do expect the very real possibility. I mean, there are possibilities that may not be absolute and, and black and white. But having, having this scientific evidence available to us now, we would not be stewards of our water supply in, in any professional way if we didn't take into consideration the real possibility that those wells might have to be shut down before we have the opportunity to research, develop, engineer, deploy, commission, and operate a, an advanced filtration system that will remove 1-4-dioxine from the water to, to accommodate regulations and requirements of the DEP and EPA.
So I guess what I would like to ask you then is because this contradicts directly testimony that the Acton Water District gave during the remand hearing?
No, not really, sir. I, I beg to differ. What we said was that we have no immediate need. Now, immediate is a word that is not precise. Immediate can be interpreted as being tomorrow, as being next week, as being next year perhaps. In geologic time, immediate could mean 1,000 years from now. That's the statement we made. We have no immediate need for that water. So to interpret that as meaning, you know, a particular span of time is not something we said. It's rather an interpretation of something that we said and we disagree with that interpretation. And we are standing here trying to explain exactly why we do disagree with it.
Then can you provide us with a specific timeframe in which you would expect to use to, that is outside that immediate need that you would expect to use Nagog Pond water?
If next month we were to detect a bolus of 1-4-dioxine in the raw water of Assabett's 1 or 2 that exceeded state regulations and exceeded federal regulations, guidelines for, for pollutant levels, we would be constrained to communicate with those bodies and determine whether or not we should shut those wells down. It could happen a month from now. It could happen two months from now. We don't know. There's an interceptor well now that EPA has cited in an, in one optimal location that's withdrawing a very small amount of polluted water, you know, from that plume. And the plume is a, it's actually a four-dimensional object, but it's a three-dimensional invasion of that, of that material that is approaching and indeed has reached the wells. These, I, I think there was a, a presentation, or there certainly is a presentation we could provide to you that would show you the, the proximity and the, and the velocity of that, of that plume of material. So you can judge for yourself, you know, what, you know, what the clear, you know, what the relative temporal insult will, will turn out to be. We don't have a crystal ball and we don't have, you know, full knowledge of everything that's going on because it is a Superfund site and the federal government is, is in charge of all that. But they do communicate with us and we are preparing, as always, to be prudent. We have been very successful in invoking water conservation measures, lowering per-capita use in the past 10 years from somewhere over 60 gallons per capita, per day, down to roughly 50. You know, quite a, quite a, quite a decrease. We can invoke further constraints, although we don't really want to. Odd even watering is still permitted, but there are tools that we have that we can use to, to ensure that the, the water that we can pump is, is being used for purposes that are life-supporting and critical. You know, an average fire takes 500, 500,000 gallons of water, you know, half a million gallons of water, typical small fire. So, I mean, all of that is tied into potable water in the town as well. So we have to be prepared for non-revenue use of water as well as revenue use of water. We never know. There may be a leak. This happens with a 100-year-old system also. And these are things that we deal with every day. What you're asking now is virtually impossible to answer in specifics, and I appreciate your drive toward quantification, which is the sign of a very scientific mind and I do, I do respect that. But at this point, we don't have enough information to specifically say, on this day, this concentration shall reach the well in the raw water, shall be withdrawn by the cone of influence of Assabett 2 or Assabett 1. We can't tell you that with confidence. With confidence, with reasonable confidence though, and I say this as one Commissioner, I would say that to, to say that that will not happen within the next 20 years would be a, and a statement that would not be very professional to make, and I would not make that statement. And I think that's the term that we're dealing with here is that 20-year issue. We just don't know. We would like to be able to work with Concord amicably so that should we need that. And, and you know, there, there were intertown ties to Concord. There are intertown ties from Acton to Littleton, to Stowe, to Maynard. We've always been good neighbors with each other and in times of drought, we've supplied Maynard and so on. These are just what neighbors do. And I would hope that Concord, you know, is truly the good neighbor it has been and will continue to behave that way. We just find that the, the fundamental statement that we have no immediate need not be misinterpreted by saying that we have no need over a period of 20 years. That's the fundamental problem we have. We never quantified that. And what I'll try to do tonight, just to finish, and I beg your, beg your patience, what I'm trying to do in iteration is tell you that we see a reasonable timeframe that, in which we might need additional water supply for our town within that 20-year period.
So I understand that sort of, that, that you do see a, that you might see the need to expand our water supply in the future and I'm fairly confident that that's the case, that that will, that that need will arise. So I guess the next question that I have for you would be, do you have other water resources? At, at least in the hearing, I was under the impression that this came out, you know, maybe I'm incorrect in this, but I was under the impression that at least the representative of the Acton Water District at the time had stated that the Acton Water District had other resources that they would look to use, to use before moving to use Nagog Pond. Is that true?
The other resources we have are the constraints on water use, which we've discussed already, which could provide us with a substantial amount of additional water. Understand, we're constrained by the DEP withdrawal rate is 1.96, if I have that correct?
1.7.
1, 1.97. Time flies. 1.97 million gallons per day average over the year. When I, when they first imposed that, it was 1.92. So it's gone up incrementally over the several years since that has been, that has been imposed on us. The nameplate, if you will, nameplate capacity of our wells is in substantial excess of that number. I have not done the arithmetic accurately and our district manager isn't here, but it's on the order of roughly twice that amount. Roughly. Please don't quote me as, as quantitatively accurate. Not that we want to pump all of our wells at their capacity. We don't want to do that. We do have emergency capacity if we absolutely need it. We can turn up the variable frequency drives. We can pump more water. You know, if there are a couple of fires in different parts of town, we can, you know, you know how our system works. We pump the stand pipes and then it falls by gravity back into the system. So what we can do is to, is to keep those stand pipes, those tanks, you know, as full as we can. And if we also constrain the use of water by, you know, such things as, as ratcheting up the limitation of, of water use during the week for non-in, in-building uses, you can see that we have quite a, a, a margin for additional supply, you know, through conservation and through additional pumping of existing resources. The preferred source of water beyond the existing 11 well sites for Acton would not be a surface water site. That is why we would hope that we can reach a, a amicable agreement ultimately with Concord to, to use some of the water that their state-of-the-art plant will produce. Surface water treatment is very different and the regulations and so on, the engineering, it's very different from, from groundwater and aquifer-based water coming, you know, as we have it coming from aquifer sources. have it, coming from aquifer sources, underground sources. Beyond that, we have spoken informally about what new sources there might be, and there are possibilities that are, you know, spaghetti on the wall, okay? Things like a deep rock well in Acton that would not be, not involve a surficial layer of glacial material but would be drilled deeply, you know, into bedrock. Rather common, and some universities, in fact, I believe Cornell and Dartmouth, someone are using this for other purposes. But drilling into bedrock is a very common, you know, situation in New England, not to strike oil necessarily, except maybe in Pennsylvania, but not to strike oil, but rather to evoke thermal benefits from that bedrock. We would evoke and produce aqueous product from that.
I guess the main drive of my questioning is clearly there was a miscommunication between the Acton Water District and the board that happened at the remand hearing. And so what I would like to determine is exactly where the Acton Water District stands with respect to its current supply situation, right? Which I think has been cleared up. So you had just stated that you believe that just with our current water sources, the Acton Water District has some room to supply more water. I'm not going to quote you on the double number that you just said. Let's just say conservatively, you know, you could increase supply to something like 2.5 million gallons per year, gallons, I think it's per day, is that what it is?
Average per day, but that's with state permission.
Of course. Of course. I'm assuming we get the state regulatory approvals for this, right? I'm just saying that let's take the regulatory stuff out of the equation for now, right? Our current resources would allow us to sustain a higher level of water usage in terms of they have a higher capacity sustainably, like in other words, we're not going to dry out those wells or anything like that. Is that true?
Speaking hydraulically, I would say that's a fair statement. I would not quantify that delta.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, and then what I would also like to ask is that you said that there are now, that the preference for the Acton Water District in the future would be to, before accessing a surface water resource such as Nagog Pond, to access other groundwater resources. Is that correct?
I think our first step would be to approach Concord in an appeal to tap into their supply. I mean, that's clearly the obvious and economic, you know, and common sense thing to do first. In a long-term situation, should zoning change? Should sewer come in and the town be completely rezoned and we become like a Framingham? All bets are off, but I think what we would do would be to exercise deep well exploration and development. The aquifer-based sources in Acton have been pretty well studied, and we feel we have the optimal, you know, from wells that aren't highly productive to wells that are highly productive, all working together in a network that has been working pretty well for us. But there's not a lot left in the, in terms of the aquifer material above bedrock in Acton that we haven't already, you know, developed and is, would produce the amount, the quantity of water that we would feel would be reasonable in terms of economic development costs and so on. We've pretty much tapped those.
So I guess the implication of your statement just now, if I'm reading this correctly, I want to make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying, is that in the event that Acton would need to develop a new water resource and not utilize existing water resources that are owned by a town, either Concord or Acton or Littleton or whatever, in the event that Acton were to need to develop a new water resource, one that it is not accessing right now, right, and the one that no other town is accessing right now, then would Nagog Pond be fairly high on that list?
I think I've answered that question. I think in terms of Nagog, we would work through Concord. We would not build our own plant. That would be both a threat to the health and welfare of Nagog Pond, threatening to overdraw the pond, which no one has really addressed, but also would incur costs that just couldn't be justified. When we have the option of approaching Concord and saying, you know, can we have, you know, X hundred thousand gallons a day for a few weeks until we get over this drought or whatever it might be, the connection is, you know, connections exist, and it would only require some turning of a valve and some, you know, some legal paperwork.
Well, but see, you're talking about a temporary situation, right? What I'm talking about, what I'm trying to ascertain is a long-term situation in which Acton actually needs a new water resource because the projected usage of water and the capacity that the Water District needs is going to exceed what is the sustainable output of its current water resources, right?
Mr. Chang, all I can say is that the Water District is required by law to supply water to water-takers who require it. Board of Health, you know, that's our requirement. That's our duty. That's our challenge. That's our raison d'etre. The question of being overwhelmed with demand is not one that the Water District has any control over. As development proceeds, you know, within the town, that I hope would be a, and I've sat on the planning board, I would hope that would be a factor that would be considered just as well as traffic studies and, you know, and other parameters, you know, involved with site plan approvals. Would the, you know, would the town approve, you know, a massive development even if zoning permitted it that would overwhelm the ability of the Water District to provide water? I don't know. I don't have an answer to that because we're separate entities. We work in response to a need that is brought to us by residents, by developers, by citizens of Acton. And when, if we are overwhelmed at some point, we'll make that fact known. But I don't see a linkage between what the Water District can do and what we may be asked to do, you know, in the future by reasons beyond our control. I'm trying to be erudite and complete in my answers as I can, but these are very strategic kinds of questions that I hope will lead to a more, and I've been, legal women voters issue over the weekend, I was asked in Candidates Night, you know, how come you and the selectmen don't chat more often? You don't communicate more often? I think this is exactly one of those most fundamental issues that we should talk about because we are limited by a finite source. Even if we can put the pedal a little closer to the metal, it's still finite, and so is, as I indicated, so is Nagog Pond. None of these water supply sources is infinite. Growth cannot be infinite therefore also. Given the constraints of modern technology, I've seen experiments and machines that can pull water out of the air. It can be done with, you know, with heat pumps working in reverse. You can do that. But it's not practical, it's not affordable, and it's certainly not something that's sustainable. So I would move, to answer your question in this way, I would encourage the, assuming I'm re-elected, or perhaps my opponent may be elected, but I would move toward establishing a much closer and perhaps more regular discussion with the Board of Selectmen, between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Water Commissioners, to address this very fundamental issue. It's always been in the back burner, but no one's really taken a look at it, and, you know, conditions being what they are, the zoning, the zoning scheme of the town being what it is based on the lack of full-town sewer-ing, things could change in the future. We don't know. You know, Brewster is now committed to history. We'll all be committed to history eventually. I've been on the board for over 30 years. I don't know how much longer. You know, I'll be here personally. I hope for a long time that everyone in this room will be active in town government. But I think we have to plan for that future with a feeling of working together and a working toward a common goal, which is supporting the citizens of Acton with the resources they need to live full and productive lives and healthy lives. And water is certainly a critical component of that, as well as all the services provided, you know, by the town, education, fire, police, first responders, and so on. All of that is what makes our town so unique, I think, that we have such a fruitful coalition of services to the people who live here, the families that live here, the businesses and so on. So my response to you is, let's talk. Let's work on this and see if there is a linkage under the current constraints of the zoning bylaw that will help us plan more judiciously and more prudently toward optimal growth, you know, in Acton, whatever optimal may be, let's define it. I think that's the whole point. We have to define that term, and we really have never done that except based on very limited parameters, very tactical parameters. Now we've got a strategic parameter, and that is water supply. So to answer your other, your previous question, MWRA has often, you know, several times approached us, they've got excess water. Yes, that can be done. The cost is phenomenal. The lines would have to cross several towns. Yes, it can be done. If Acton becomes a Framingham, I expect the cost would be borne by the, you know, by the town as it would happen. But we don't count on that. It's not, certainly not high on our shortlist of options. And again, to iterate, our first option, if we need more water fast, would be to work with Concord to supply water from the Nagog Treatment Plant. And secondarily, in conjunction with applying the constraints on water provision, water use that we, those tools that we have, and also increasing output from the wells with the existing wells, with cooperation from the state. This is all a doable scenario, a series of scenarios. Going beyond that, I don't have a crystal ball.
Mr. Phillips, I would really appreciate if you were less erudite. Yeah, we're used to much briefer answers, and Mr. Chang is asking some convoluted answers, and you're giving a very, very long response. I think everybody here or those of us who understand what the MWRA is are pretty well convinced that that's not a really plausible option for us due to the cost, the connection to wherever the closest point is. But I don't know, Mr. Chang, if you had further questions? Because Katie and I are both itching to ask questions.
Sure, no, go ahead. Like I said, this line of questioning really is to determine what is the list of priorities that the Acton Water District currently has in terms of development of new water resources, right? Not existing water resources, not expanding use of existing water resources, but the actual development of a new water resource, what the current list of priorities is. And at least, the reason I ask is because I was, is because when, is during the remand hearing, when it was stated that the Acton Water District had access to additional resources, my own personal interpretation, I can't speak for the other three of you, my own personal interpretation was that there existed some plan for if we needed to actually put a 12th well or a 12th water resource of some kind into play, there was a plan for that, right? Does that plan exist?
The only plan that we've discussed is the hard rock, the deep rock well that I've discussed.
Okay.
There's a possibility of some minor source in West Acton, but that, I understand, has not proved to be as economical as was thought 15 or 20 years ago when it was brought up.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Katie, go ahead. I have another question, sure.
Yeah, no, I have more, a couple of comments and a question. So one, I just want to make it clear that this agreement in no way limits the ability of the Acton Water District, of the towns of Acton, Town of Concord, and Town of Littleton to have discussions related to sharing of resources, regional planning, any of that. And in fact, we still are planning to go forward with that and encourage those discussions. So I don't like the implication that this in any way would prohibit that. It doesn't at all. Secondly, you know, I want to say that, you know, again, this 20 years wasn't come up, wasn't created out of the blue. We had discussions with the Acton Water District staff who have indicated to us, and again, it's based somewhat on what you've been saying here tonight, that the Acton Water District's first sort of, you know, look, if we need to rest our wells due to any threats or other issues or expand our sources, would not be to create our own filtration plant and to access Nagog Pond that way. And in fact, we would probably do it through, as you said, if Concord, when Concord either by settling litigation, settling with us, or goes through the courts, then has a permit to build their treatment plant, that you would then come up with some agreement to access Nagog, the waters of Nagog Pond that way through Concord's filtration plant. And again, the 20 years were in part with discussions of the staff of the Acton Water District, but I also like to note again that we're not saying or asking the Acton Water District to commit to saying that they will not seek to assert our rights to using Nagog Pond within 20 years. That's why we made sure that you're not a party to this agreement, and that's why there is the triggering events so that we can, if we do see the need to use that, trigger an end to this agreement. So there is an out there. And so my only question is very simply, have the Water District Commissioners voted to approve the statement that you read and to not support this agreement in its entirety?
Statement, yeah.
Or were your concern, and were your concerns just with the statement in here regarding the Acton Water District not foreseeing the need to use Nagog Pond for 20 years or for the term of the agreement? Or are you not supportive of this idea that we can guarantee Concord to continue to provide water to residents and businesses a long way until and unless we see, foresee the need to assert our rights to Nagog Pond? So have, my question is just have the Water District Commissioners voted to support both your statement and voted to support, to not support this agreement?
Katie, whether we support the agreement or not is immaterial because we're not party to the agreement. What I'm trying to say here is that the Commissioners, in their meeting last Monday, came up with a statement that I read to you, and it was uniformly supported and edited and worked through. My statements here tonight can be divided into two, really two parts. One is the reading of this statement in which we are informing you that the Water District Commissioners have testified that while we have no immediate need for Nagog Pond as a water source, this did not mean that we would not consider utilizing Nagog Pond as a water source for the next 20 to 25 years, through Concord or through other measures. That's the fundamental, you know, agreement that the, I would not be standing here in a public meeting, speaking, you know, as an individual, had I not had, I'm surprised you asked me the question, had the Commissioners not agreed on this statement. And I really don't have a lot of patience for that.
I want to know if you voted specifically to not support this Warren Arco.
Mr. Phillips, please, please. She did not mean any disrespect, but you didn't make it clear at the beginning that you were reading a statement on behalf of the Commissioners. My question would be, who drafted that statement? Because I got a report from staff people about what was going on at the Water District, and it was, I think emotions were running very high.
Yes.
And I don't, you said you edited it, but I know that, I heard that there was a draft that was provided by somebody in the audience who lives in Quail Ridge.
The statement I read was provided to us by Christopher Allen, who is the district manager, at our request, to write the statement as it will be recorded and is recorded in the minutes of that meeting. It is as accurate a statement as I can read to you today. It is in our minutes.
Okay. So it was a different statement that somebody told me?
And there are other issues with regard to Concord, you know, that threaten water supply. If Concord should have a fuel or a vent spill at their bus garage, we could have an immediate problem without worrying about Star Meadow, without worrying, you know, it's within a few hundred yards of our, of our without worrying, you know, it's within a few hundred yards of our well, so. We've attempted to speak to Concord about this and without, you know, without any response. We are concerned about Concord as as our experience in dealing with them, you know, dealing with the town and dealing with the town representatives has, you know, has occurred, you know, in several ways. I shouldn't, this is a public meeting. I, suffice it to say that we did not say, mean to, we did not imply, although it's been interpreted that we have no immediate need for Nagog means that we will not have a need for any finite period of time. That's basically what I came up here to read. And the fact that I've had the opportunity to answer questions, I really appreciate, but.
I have one more question.
No, I'll try to answer.
Okay, because you've talked, Chingson was pursuing a line of questioning that was of interest to me. It's my understanding that there are wells that have not been explored fully. In the event that, you know, there's this assumption that somehow, in an emergency at least, you would be able to go to Concord and take advantage of their high-tech treated water, which isn't going to exist, frankly, if the permit decision remains stuck in litigation, you know, so. But my question is, okay, as between trying to get Nagog Pond water, whether it's through treatment via Concord, assuming that they're, they get permitted to build this improved plant, or whether it's through exploitation, exploration and exploitation of a deep well, which is going to take longer, you know? It's just, would you, for long-term purposes, you know? Suppose next month you got word that there was one far dioxide that was approaching too close, you couldn't control it through the treatment process they had in place, and you had to shut down the wells. What would the Water District do beyond increasing these, these storage, you know, and increasing conservation and increasing the storage of whatever those tanks were? What if you realized that this was going to be a long-term problem? Would you still go to Concord and look for their assistance short-term and long-term? Or what would be, you know, what would be your fallback position?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to answer that question as an individual because it has not come before the Board of Commissioners as a group. I am here really to represent the group on an agreed-upon statement and to give you my candid and best responses to your questions. And I think I've done my best to do that. I hope it meets your, you know, your expectations and I've answered your questions appropriately. That is not a question I can answer.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Farther than I already have.
Yeah. I mean, I do agree that one of the challenges, and I think one of the problems with the fact that the two towns are in litigation and Water District is not, is that obviously Acton Representatives haven't been able to talk freely with the Water District Representatives in a, you know, an executive session setting. There's no justification for doing that. So it's very difficult for us to get information from the Water District, which obviously is the water supplier for most of our town, about what their projections are. Because generally, the discussion, certainly if it involves a quorum of the Commissioners, has to be in a public forum, and you can't do that when you're in the middle of litigation and you're negotiating a settlement. So that has been a real hindrance to us, frankly, in trying to have a free-flowing discussion between the municipal side and the Water District side. I mean, that's a function of the fact that they're two separate entities. It would be, you know, and I think people want to keep them two separate entities, but I think that it's created a challenge, and some people in the Water District Commission may have felt that we were making assumptions really unfairly without information, and yeah, we didn't have full information because it's almost impossible for us to get to the point where we're ready for information without disclosing everything to the public. So that's why we're at this point where we are now with this agreement. And yeah, we're hearing, hearing at least some of the perspective from the Water District, so.
Well, I'd be very pleased, Madam Chairman, to bring up the question, that very strategic question you've asked at the next meeting of Commissioners, and we can start addressing, you know, the issue. It's not an issue we, you know, we tend to be pretty tactical and pretty responsive to immediate threats. That's the nature of Water Districts, you know. Ninety percent of what we do is just maintaining and.
It's town government, governmental entities in large part are life in general. A lot of it's putting out little fires, and it's the longer-term planning that is more challenging.
Exactly. So thanks to this discussion, we now have a new area for long-term discussion, long-term planning, that can look decades ahead. And we can reexamine our assets. We can examine our plans for, you know, for development of further water resources and so on. I, with great pleasure, will take this back to the District, at least one more meeting, to speak with my fellow Commissioners, and try to get it on the warrant for, you know, for development, further discussion. I appreciate, you know, the questioning and the opportunity to bring this back to the District.
Well, thank you. And I do agree with you that there should be more communication between the municipal entity and the Water District. We do, when we are approving, reviewing projects for permitting, at least the Board of Selectmen do seek input from the Water District, but it's not a formalized process. There is a provision in this agreement for specific provisions through zoning amendments that would provide that if, if, if there's going to be a project that requires drawing on Concord water, that you have to go through the Concord permitting, the Water District's standards. And when I was talking to Water District staff, I did, they said, "We want that too." So when the Town of Acton decides to amend its zoning to provide for water supply issues dealing with the two Water Districts, then I think that we will make sure to include Acton Water District as well as Concord Water District. But I think that, yeah, generally, there's a need for more cross-communication between the entities.
Absolutely, and we will initiate that.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Now, it's 9:15, it's early by our standard. So who else would like to offer a statement? Mr. Sekuler, go ahead.
I would, Bob Sekuler from Parkland Lane. I'll keep this short. I had a long list of comments and questions to make, but in the spirit of Mr. Phillips's introduction, particularly with his, which is quite appropriate remarks about Brewster, Conan, I'll just keep this short and try to be as more collegial than I had anticipated being. It was very, the conversation I just heard was extremely useful. I had no idea, for instance, that the amount of water, if I heard the number right, that Concord currently provides to Acton customers along 2A. I had no idea how small it was. I heard the number, 61,000 gallons per day, which is minuscule compared to what Concord is proposing to draw from Nagog Pond. The one point I do want to emphasize is, I heard a number of people say that, first of all, if there is a trigger, a trigger event, that Concord could shut off the water. And the metaphor that was used, tomorrow, that is, there would be an immediate shut-off. I heard that being said.
No.
Let me, let me finish.
That's not correct.
And I, I think that is not only a worst-case scenario, I think it is preposterous because undoubtedly the DEP would have something to say. And I don't think it would even be, I don't think we, as a town, would even be required to expend a lot of money on legal fees to preserve that. The second thing that I heard, particularly from Mr. Phillips, I heard him answer how long it would take to respond to a triggering event, that is, to run that expensive pipe along 2A. And I heard an estimate, and I know that on that he was speaking only for himself, and that had not, I don't think had been discussed by the Commissioners, I heard about an estimate of two years. So if, if and when the, our Board of Selectmen find that they need to discuss or want to discuss this further with Concord, this particular draft, I would urge them to push particularly for an extension of that time for the, at a minimum of two years, to allow the Acton Water District to really put that pipe in place. And the other thing is that Mr. Phillips remarked on, I don't know if it was part of his prepared remarks or not, was the importance of monitoring. That is, I remember that one of the, one of, I thought, the most significant conditions that was included in the permitting, the permit that you guys voted for, I thought one of the most significant conditions was the monitoring. And I think that not including that in some form in this document is a serious mistake. It's also hypocritical on Concord's part because Concord deemed that requirement or that condition, excuse me, that condition, it deemed it capricious and onerous, among the other conditions. At the same time, as you probably are aware, Concord is demanding that Littleton allow it, that is, it, Concord, to monitor any possible draw from Nagog that, or from the wells around, the well around Nagog. Concord considers that onerous, I'm sorry, onerous and capricious not to be allowed to do that. And I think at that point, I'm going to, I'm going to stop. And I do want to commend counsel for the excellent summary and presentation and for a document that is almost readable by a non-lawyer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sekuler. Next up, Dr. Castens.
Thank you. I have two question, one question and one comment. And my question is on page seven of the document. It says, "Expansion of service. Concord agrees to provide water service to new and expanded uses on parcels within Concord's 2A service area in Acton that do not front Acton's Water District water distribution system up to a total commitment not to exceed." And then it says, "To be determined, TBD." Has that been determined?
The number that's being used right now is 61,000 gallons per day. So the existing number is below that.
So I think Mr. Phillips said something around 6,000.
I believe the existing users, according to the Concord Representatives, the existing users have an average use of 37,945 gallons per day.
Say that again? Say that again, please?
Thirty-seven thousand, nine forty-five, average gallons per day.
Thirty-seven thousand?
The projected, based on a build-out projection that the Planning Office prepared and some flow analyses that tied into that, the 61,000 cap was, was proposed as a realistic projection of what, you know, a realistic buildup might look like.
Okay, so it's a, it still remains a pretty small component of the.
Yeah, compared to what they're pulling out of that, it's a small component. What's important about it, as much as anything, isn't the amount of water they're providing. It's, it's obviating the need to, for us, for Acton, to construct all the infrastructure to provide the same small amount. That's the issue, right?
So thank you for answering my question. So my comment is that I would urge the Select Board and the citizens who vote at town meeting to consider what happens after 20 years or 25 years. And it looks to me very likely that at that point, Concord will say, with appropriate prior notice, a year or whatever the appropriate amount of time would be, at that point, Concord will say, "Oh, we're going to stop. You know, we're not going to provide any more water to the people along 2A because we need the water for our own town." And one of the reasons that I think that might be the case is because, you know, there are big plans to build in Concord, including to build on, we're back to thinking about the Superfund site. So the NMI Superfund site is in Concord, and Concord is on track to become the owner of that site when the EPA remediation is finished. In 2015, Concord's town meeting authorized the Concord Select Board to take ownership of the property under certain conditions on their want for a town meeting this spring. They have, their Article 28 is to determine whether the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 or any other sum to be expanded under the direction of the town manager to create a redevelopment plan for the NMI site. So this is a 46-acre prime parcel of land in, well, maybe not prime now, but it's, EPA has committed to remediate it to the residential standard, which is a higher standard than the normal standard. And this Warren article, you know, talks about use that will be developed under this redevelopment plan that would include commercial enterprise and housing. So, you know, 46 acres, they're going to need water for this, and the time span on which they might need water for this, you know, the time to remediate a Superfund site from consent decree, which is where they're approaching at this moment to the point where it's ready to use, is on the order of 20 or 25 years. So, you know, I think we really need to seriously consider the possibility that in 20 or 25 years, Concord will say, "Yeah, we need this water now. You can't have it anymore." And I think that will leave us in a really bad spot. If this scenario were to play out, then the Acton Water District would have to supply water on 2A 20 or 25 years from now. 20 or 25 years from now, that would be a lot harder. The costs would be higher, the options to find water to service those properties would be more challenging. So we just heard from them that the available well sites within the boundaries of Acton would be likely used up. Climb-back access to Nagog would be harder after 20 years of exclusive Concord use of Nagog. Then Massachusetts Water Resources Authority would no longer be coming and asking, "Do we want to be a customer of theirs?" And climate change would likely be bringing us more frequent and severe droughts. So if we're going to have to do this eventually, you know, we're not going to be better off doing it 20 or 25 years from now when Concord turns around and says, "You can't have this water. We need it for our own town." So it looks to me that Concord is planning for the long term. I read this warrant article, and I see a town that is, you know, looking decades out into the future of what they want to look like, decades into the future. I look at our warrant article, and I see a short-term provision that will buy us, you know, a couple of years of not having to address this problem. So I don't think that's the position we want to be in. To be with signing, it seems to me that an intermunicipal agreement needs to take all the stakeholders into account. The stakeholders in all three towns that have rights to Acton, and the stakeholders in the current generation, as well as the stakeholders in the future. So such an agreement would seek to develop Nagog Pond as a regional resource in which all three towns would share in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
So mine is, I'll keep it to a simple question and then a simple statement. Is the permit not subject to any voting process by town folk?
The, sorry, the special permit, I probably should, thanks for asking that question. So the special permit, there is a hearing set for March 29 on a, another revised, modified special permit, which will be posted shortly. That permit is not, that permit hearing and the decision related to that will not be subject to a town meeting vote. The town meeting vote relates to this intermunicipal agreement if it's supported by the Selectmen tonight.
Okay. I agree with everything that my fellow town folk have said. And I still think that tripling the amount of withdrawal from Nagog Pond threatens its ecology and viability. You know, think if you got triple your salary. I think of monetary tombs, triple your 401K, whatever it is. But it's not that. It's, it's that the effects of tripling that much water withdrawal are, in fact, unknown. I've been in touch with the DEP. They just grandfathered in this amount with no, you know, like, as they say, we now know with the hydrology, that, you know, that wasn't the science that existed years ago. We know mistakes have been made in the past. Whoever hasn't made a mistake hasn't done anything in their life, probably. You know, we've got contaminated areas. People didn't know. We now know at least a bit more about, like, you know, Concord suing Littleton because they're sinking a deep-bedrock well too close to their surface water. It's not supposed to connect, but you know what? It might. And unfortunately, some people have some blind faith into our DEP, and they're, they're doing the. doing the best, but they're not, they don't have the data, they don't have the studies. And I, I myself would like to, I'd rather not see this 15 million gallon a day permit, but, you know, that's their cleanup capacity. But should it go through, at least put back in the monitoring positions, like if the pond drops like two feet, maybe they should back off for a while or something. So that's my plea. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Basil Chigas, Nagog Hill Road. I've been patiently sitting back there, listening to these comments and find that they're all very, very worthwhile. I don't remember your name, but I'd just like to add that your comments about the planning that Concord is doing really speaks to the lack of planning that exists here in, in Acton that has gotten us to the position that we're in. If you drive down Baker Avenue, you'll see the big new hotel and all those buildings. It was Arthur D. Little that, that established nuclear metal, metals so that they could develop a uranium shell that the Army could use. But more importantly, Concord realized years and years ago that with their build-out, that they were going to need more water. The number-one water user in Concord, anybody want to guess what it is? The prison. The prison. And they don't use water control devices. So think of it in a different way. Concord is running a business. They've invested a lot of money in that business. That ozoneation device that they have there is what provides Portland, Maine through Sebago Lake with its, its water. It's a very expensive device. They've been buying land in Littleton for years. So, so who here thinks that Concord is going to say, sure, we'll, we'll share our water and you don't have to give us anything in return? Does anybody here think that? Because if you don't think that that's what's, if you, if you, if you don't think that that's possible, then think of the way, how is it going to be possible that they will want to share their water with us? In my opinion, ultimately, the only bargaining ability that Acton and perhaps Littleton has is to have a determination as to what, in fact, are Acton's legal rights to the water issue today. Now, you may want to avoid litigation, but as has been pointed out here before this evening, freedom comes at a cost. And the cost may be the expense of our town council over here or some of his colleagues. You can try to negotiate and, and, and probably that's a good idea, to ask them if they're willing to share. I have a feeling I know what the answer is going to be, but nevertheless, it's worth a try. So in the absence of their saying yes, what are you going to do? And that's where you come in, where town council comes in. Now, at some point, there's got to be a cost and a timeframe to this. Am I right? Yeah, how much, you know?
It's into a process you're talking about.
I'm talking about the fear that it seems, in, in looking at this document, that the town of Acton has as to how long and what the cost may be to the town to litigate this matter to a conclusion.
I just want to clarify, because the last speaker and you seem to be talking about the special site plan permit. We're not talking about that tonight. That's not what we're discussing. That's, hold on, let me finish. That's not what we're discussing tonight. And again, there's a permit in place that has conditions. Currently, those conditions are under litigation and potentially negotiation. But we are not talking right now, nor are we bringing in this Warren article or to town meeting, the question of the site plan permit for Concord's filtration plant. Right now, we are talking about a 2A agreement, which is part of, you know, this bigger picture. So that is what your comments should address right now. We're not talking about the site plan permit.
So you're trying to limit my ability to talk about anything that's ancillary to that? Is that what you're saying?
You know, let, just let him finish what he's saying.
That's fine, but I'm not going to answer. I don't think questions related to council's costs are appropriate when we're not discussing that.
Madam Chairman, you know, you mentioned, and it's visible, your frustration with the process of not being able to talk with the, the water people. Why do most other towns, including Concord, have a public works commission and the water department is a part of the town's planning process? This, this 61,000 gallons over here is just the tip of the problem in, in, in Acton's planning process. We don't know how many people can be living over there. I, I haven't seen any reasonable estimate. To come up with a figure of 61,000 gallons, I mean, you might as well be pulling numbers out of the, out of the sky. Has anyone established what the total build-out is? I mean, really accurately? Or is that just a guesstimate? So Acton's future water needs are much larger than what you think. And until you get some planning, getting, getting a planning board that's not going to put a development up in Quail Ridge that both the police department and the fire department said, "Don't do," then development in this town will go unchecked and the water demands will increase. And Nagog Pond, when you look at the problem in your rearview mirror, it'll be too late if we give up our right to the water in Nagog Pond. Because the water in this town is surface runoff. Think of a champagne glass with straws in it. The more straws you put in that and complicate it by potential contamination, the greater the danger is to the people in the town. Not a very good agreement. Not a very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chigas. Yes?
Good evening. Marty Petritas, One Hazelnut Street. I'm also the president of the, of the Acorn Park Association. I promise to stick to the schedule and, or to the subject matter here. And actually, I have more of a question than a statement and one of clarification. The permit review, Section 4B, the permit review uses in Acton. Does this agreement in any way forbear, forgive, bypass any of the current conditions for the permitting?
Oh, you mean on, like, exist if somebody came with a permit? No, they still have to go through regular permitting. It's just essentially an extra.
There is no agreement here on the conditions or anything. That's a separate issue going forward. This, this, this document does not make any agreement to the conditions of the permit.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
I've spoken previously at meetings as an abutter to Concord's land and as a resident of Breezy Point Road, but this evening I'm simply speaking as a citizen of Acton concerned about its future water supply. I'm very glad that previous speakers, including Mr. Phillips, have said what they have said and I associate myself with all of their comments. I have a few comments specifically about this agreement. According to this agreement, the town of Concord has been supplying water along Route 2A for 109 years. They have never required a contractual agreement, as far as I know, nor as far as this agreement states. They are now essentially saying that they will have the power to cut off that water, which has been supplied for more than a century, if Acton exerts its legal rights, which have existed since 1884. Or in fact, if the Acton Water District applies, not just the town of Acton. That, to me, is an astonishing agreement. It basically says that something that has been in existence between two towns for more than a century has become a bargaining chip to prevent the town of Acton from exercising legal rights given to it in 1884. I find that astonishing. I don't think we need a detailed legal interpretation to understand the historical narrative here. On page five, item two, section A, tolling. It says, "The commencement of the 20-year initial term shall be tolled one until Concord has secured a final special permit decision from the Acton Board of Selectment authorizing it to construct its proposed intake pipe and water treatment plant with any associated appeals fully resolved." I do not understand what that means. Fully resolved? In whose favor? How resolved? Could someone answer that question?
Yeah, I can answer that. So their commitment is subject to them getting the permit for the new treatment plan?
They have the permit. They've contested it in court.
But it's not, it's not final until the litigation is fully resolved. So that comes out of the statute. And basically, what, what this means is until they get a final permit that they can act on, which they cannot until they, we resolve things.
Well, what does resolve mean? Does that mean resolve in the courts by a court decree? Or does it mean resolve to Concord satisfaction?
Yeah, to Concord satisfaction.
I see.
Or, or an adjudication.
I see. All right. All right. Well, it's good to know that it means that because that is a sticking point, especially since the end of the agreement states that any ambiguity as construed against the drafter thereof shall not apply to this agreement. Who drafted this agreement?
It was a mutual effort. So this is not an agreement that was drafted by one attorney and handed to a party and asked them to sign.
So in other words, this, the drafter of this agreement are both parties? Is that legally correct?
It's fair to say.
Fair to say?
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay. That's a definite answer. All right. I have one other comment to make. Water emergencies happen like bankruptcies, little by little and then all at once. That is the way they historically have happened and that is the way they will happen if they happen in Acton. Any historian of water emergencies knows that. If the town of Acton faces a water emergency and decides that it wants to use Nagog Pond or any other water source that requires regulation and planning, it will take a number of years to do so. In fact, counsel this evening himself said there will be, quote, "A prolonged regulation requirement." Two years? Five years? Who knows? This agreement really isn't talking about 20 years or 25 years. It could be talking about a much longer period of time if Acton decides to exercise its legal rights under 1884. And yet Concord, under this agreement, holds as a bargaining chip the supply of water along 2A, which it has supplied for 109 years. And which now says, threatens basically to take it away unless Acton signs this agreement. I find that very difficult to accept as a citizen of Acton. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen?
Hi, I'm Barry Rosen. I just want to address Chin Sung for a moment. You, you asked, one of the questions you, to had asked is, do you see a need that Acton may have to? Nobody knows what's going to really happen, Chin Sung, but I'll give you a, a real scenario that's a very possible scenario. No one knows when it'll happen, but everybody in the, at the Water District agreed, it's, I'm going to get this thing out of my way, everybody agreed it's going to happen. It's just a question of when. And that is a very simple thing. The Water District fought for quite a while and tried to address the town of Concord about their bus, what they call their bus depot. It's a maintenance and fueling facility. It stores a very large amount of diesel fuel, solvents, et cetera, in a building. The building, interestingly enough, they applied for an exemption. It has no fire suppression system. But that's, if they ever have an oil spill, there is pervy, impervious pavement that runs from that facility down to 156, to within 156 feet of the recharge area for Acton's Asvet Wells. I'm not so worried about the diesel fuel. Sometimes you can stop it. Sometimes you can't, but sometimes you can stop it. But in New England, because you get temperatures below 50 degrees occasionally, they put a solvent, actually, in this area, they put a, a number of solvents to keep the oil from congealing so that they can run the diesel buses. That goes right through the soil. You can't stop it and you can't remove it from the water. It's basically like what for, dioxin? Virtually impossible. Very difficult to move. That could cause an immediate need for Acton to throw what's left, the two of the three wells that are still running. One's gone. Two of the three would be gone right away. It would go right into your recharge area. That could be hypothetical, but a real instance. And we tried to stop because even though they, it'll never happen, it happens and you know it rolls downhill. And that's one of the things we're worried about and we weren't able to stop that. So that's just to answer that. The Acton, something, I don't remember who asked, might have been Katie, I'm, I'm not sure. Somebody asked, has the Acton Water District ever talked to Concord, blah, blah, blah? The answer is yes. I've been present a couple of times when they've tried to talk to Concord. The only times, and I'm at most meetings, Monday nights and the Wednesday night of the meetings, the only time Concord has appeared is when they've asked for something. And I can tell you, and it's in the minutes, they have not been truthful. They've answered questions that we later found were not correct. Maybe it was a misunderstanding. I'm not sure it was a misunderstanding. This is no reflection of the people of Concord, who I think are not aware of a lot of things. They do believe that they are being very ecological in their thinking. They were surprised at a meeting I attended at one of their churches when they found out some of the things that were being done. So I think the Acton Water District, from my observation, and I'm not one of the commissioners, of course, they have tried on numerous occasions where I was present to speak to Concord and Concord has not, the Concord government, I'm not talking about the people, the Concord government has not been responsive, except when they asked for something. When Acton went to Concord to ask for something, on two occasions, one at a town meeting and one where I happened to be in attendance with one of the other water commissioners who were asked to go, they actually removed the agenda item that night from their agenda. So Acton did not have an opportunity to address them. Chris had removed it from the agenda after we had gotten there. So I think Acton, truthfully, from what I've seen, personally observed, has tried on a number of times, I believe, to work in very good faith with Concord. So I, I don't think I could blame the commissioners for not attempting to do things with Concord. Okay. Now, another thing I was going to ask, I've already been addressed, so I'm obviously not going to try to repeat them. One of the things that does concern me about the Acts of 1884, which I know you're familiar with, is if the Acton Water District should say, in a month, we need those waters, and they start the procedure, not only is it a, quote, "A triggering event," and I believe Concord would view the. and I believe Concord would view the Acton Water District as a triggering event, if not they'd probably try to adjudicate it and say, well, if they, even if they don't do that, the town of Acton, if the law stays as it is, the town of Acton is on the hook for indemnifying Concord for any water losses they, they suffer. So if Acton says, "We need ten million gallons," one million, whatever they need, let's say it's a million gallons, and that takes, they'll come off with Concord because they're not gonna allow it to be overdrawn, where are we gonna get that water? Concord's gonna say, "Acton, we, we need to do something, we need to drill another well, we need to build another power plant." The town of Acton could, according to the way the law's written, no one's ever interpreted yet, the town of Concord could be on the hook. So I hope somebody's considered that. The town of Acton, not the Acton Water District. It says the town of Acton would be on the hook, that's the way the law is written today. The other thing, and it pains me, is that we might not be in this position if at least one of those articles, the one where we worked with the town of Littleton, one of the voluntary warrants from last town meeting, if we had worked with the town of Littleton, we might not be in this position today. Jamie Eldridge has spoken to some people, and he's been waiting to hear from the selectmen. Since he, obviously, he's waiting to hear from us that we want to, he's aware of the article, of all the warrant articles. He's ready to do something and look, relook at the law of eight, the laws, I guess they're called, of eighteen eighty-four, the one that concerns us. Understanding that the Acton Water District was formed in nineteen twelve, the Acts of nineteen twelve is where the Acton Water District was formed, so clearly, it's a, it's a different time, it's a very different time, and unfortunately or fortunately, a lot of things have not been interpreted or reinterpreted now that there's an Acton Water District that represents and is the water supplier according to the Acts, Massachusetts Legislature Acts of, of nineteen twelve. So we don't know what's gonna happen. I agree with, I can't remember the gentleman that spoke, maybe it's more than one, that I think Acton, we are really postponing the inevitable. The inevitable being that we, the town, ultimately is going to have to do something about supplying water to the, to A strip. I, I don't know that this will go on forever, I do agree with the other person that no one knows, and I don't purport to know either, no one knows whether Concord will continue to service those two-way strip forever. I, I believe we're postponing. And finally, I, I guess, or maybe almost finally, no one knows, the water commissioners don't know, the staff doesn't know what Acton's gonna need. I, I heard somebody say that the MWRA is, is out of, is out of contention, I know for a fact that's not true. I've heard staff talk about it. It was introduced by a committee that I sit on a while ago, and it was looked, it was, it was assumed it was too expensive. Well, first of all, you don't have to go the same distance, you'd connect to the new plant they built in Marlborough. That is a doable plant, particularly at the time, Stowe's looking for a water supply and Mater's is looking for a water supply, you'd have to pass through those two towns. The committee had spoken to, a committee I sat on, spoke to them a while ago, and there was interest by both towns to cost share. And the MWRA offered a loan of zero percent, over ten years, renewable, and they offer that to anybody who hooks up to them for infrastructure only, and that's infrastructure, they order, they offer tenure loans at zero percent. That changes things a little bit when you figure out your costs, it makes a big difference when the percent goes down to zero. Could MWRA be, yes, it could be that, it could be Nagog, it could be a bedrock well, no one knows. What the Water District has to do, and what has been recommended to them, is to think, they have to think strategically, they have to plan strategically, and you gotta think not, you gotta think without the box. And I think the selectmen have to think without the box, and then out of the box, no box. You gotta think all things are possible, and that's the way it has to be with water now. It's one of those things no one really knows. Most people think it'll be regionalization, the state seems to be pushing that way with legislation that's being introduced, whether you think it's good or bad, and it's, they look like they're moving that way, no one really knows. And the other thing is, I wanted to ask, I don't know if anybody knows, did anyone, has anyone, I mean anyone, I don't mean individuals, I mean Jeff, you guys, has anyone discussed any of this with the, with the DEP about Route Two? Like what would happen if, they're pretty friendly people, you can talk to them, I've talked to them on many occasions about water, I've been asked to talk to them about water ins, water issues on a number of occasions, has anybody spoke to them? Sometimes they, they can be helpful, they're actually pretty nice people, and there is a group that focuses on, they focus on areas, and there is a group that focuses on Acton that will talk to you. You can ask them questions and they'll talk to you over the phone, and then if you ask for written opinions, you have to go down there, you can talk, you can get written opinions. The only other thing I, I do want to say is that, and again, nobody else is posuring, Littleton's attorney has spoken to Concord's attorney, you may know, you probably know this, Jeff. And they've told them that they're, they've already notified Concord of their intention to begin withdrawing. And part of this comes from the fact that Littleton has tried on a number of occasions to dig wells to the, I'm not sure what direction it is, on the Littleton side of Nagog Pond. And Concord has fought them on a number of occasions, saying it would, it would affect their ability to draw water from Nagog. And so Littleton said, then, we'll draw from Nagog, which is just, basically the same effect. So I, I think they're serious, whether they'll go with the well, whether they'll suck, put a straw into Nagog, again, no one knows, no one knows, but the effect is the same, they're gonna, they're gonna put, they're gonna put a well in. They, 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 they can prove a need for a well, especially with the new Pepsi plant going in, they have a need. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I have some comments of fact, I think, and then some questions, and then my, my actual comments. We got a lecture, I don't even remember where it was, maybe it was in the Green Acton meeting, Jane Sarasso used to work for the Water District, and she gave us a big speech about how it's not very easy to stop supplying water once you are already supplying water. So it seems to me, and this is perhaps a fact, this constrains Acton and implicates Acton as a water service provider, so just, that's not requiring Acton Water District. It, it seems that by setting up these constraints and worrying about Route Two-A, that it makes Acton an implicated responsible party. I see that the constraints are, are all on us, and the constraints on Concord are pretty optional. There's all these if, ands, and ways for them to weasel out of things, whether it's that they actually do cumulative planning, which I've been asking the town to do cumulative planning since I ran in two thousand and eleven, and I'm asking it again. All these projects are no impact, no impact, no impact, but over time, there's a huge impact. Currently, the applications that are in process for development, I estimate will use up half of the margin to the one point nine, the gallons per day that were allowed, without any cumulative planning. So, and I just wanna make the comment that, Acton Water District Commissioners, I think you've got a staffing problem if your staff is making informal calls to, is part of litigation, but that's just me, my business side of me. Relative to MWRA, I just wanna make the point that there's a lot of towns that I work with and in my volunteer work, and they all have these step charts that exceed the state allowable amount, so there are calculations that say that maybe MWRA won't even have enough water if we wait. And relative to cumulative planning, somebody made the comment here that this, this is just a small thing that we're taking out of the litigation process. I feel like it's, it's, it's such a huge thing, to, to, to call it a small thing seems, seems egregious. And relative to not including Acton Water District in with the executive session, because you can vote them in anytime you want, that seems really odd. But now, I wanna just point out a couple of things in the actual documentation. You, on page two, you reference replacement of the intake pipe, but no, you're, you're, you would be allowing a lengthening and a greatly increase in that. Then on page three, about middle of the page, it says, "Acton Water District would be required to construct a new water main." I don't think that you can state that as a fact, it's not true, it may be required. Furthermore, down in the whereas, Concord is willing to commit, but then under chapter two-B-I-I, there's effectively the way that Concord can get out of that because for any expansion includes a water demand impact analysis and concludes, and then Concord concludes that such proposed new expanded use, including any approved demand mitigation requirements, will not compromise service to existing customers or exceed Concord's ability. So, see, these guys are doing cumulative planning, it's very exciting, and so I think that if we're willing to write that whereas, they're doing cumulative planning, I think that we should do that, too. Other people have brought up all these other issues, and then I guess my biggest problem is I feel like, why so urgent? It seems that we have all the cards, if we allow, if we refuse to settle, this goes to the courts, and in the courts, Concord will have to do something they weren't, they did not have to do here, and that's prove that they need this. Prove that they need the building that big, prove that they need every aspect of what they think they wanna do. The onus is on the applicant, the onus is not on us to settle, the onus is on the applicant to prove that they need something. And of course, we can prove that we need access to the walking trail and various other things that we have in there, like protection for the eagles and all, safety for the children on the roads with the chemical trucks. And so I urge you to wait, I urge you to respect what the town meeting said about our asserting our rights and asking the legislature formally to clarify and assert those rights, and I urge you to, to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then. Well, I don't know if we wanna discuss this a little bit amongst ourselves, or if we...
I have one more question, actually.
Yeah, sure.
Just a question. So if we vote this down at town meeting, what happens?
Do you wanna take that, Jeff?
If, if this agreement gets voted no at town meeting, it's dead. It's nothing.
And so, and what does that mean to the permit?
Well, that depends on what happens tonight and at the hearing on the permit. So it's possible that the selectmen support the agreement tonight so that it can be presented to town meeting, and then there's gonna be a hearing and, you know, deliberation and vote after the hearing, scheduled for March twenty-ninth. And that decision's gonna be based on, you know, the revisions that are being presented for that decision, and it's gonna stand independent of what happens at town meeting.
So if it's independent of the permit conditions or approval or nonapproval, then why do it?
I'm sorry, if, if this agreement is independent?
Correct.
Because it's providing the town an opportunity to deal with these issues in this format, and the town's being given the choice whether it wants to do that. If the town decides that it doesn't want to and it votes this down, that's the town's prerogative.
And so there's nothing conditional in the, I guess, the permit? This has no impact on the permit, okay? This is completely separate, and, and the reason it's separate is because the board decided to try to move forward with this. Okay, we're still obviously dealing with the permit decision, but, you know, we're just, we wanted to try to move this forward because we felt that the issue was important enough. But if town meeting, town meeting, well, Katie's gonna be presenting, so town meeting needs to understand that the vote on, on this Article Twenty-Six has no impact on the permit decision. It doesn't invalidate it, it's still in litigation, it has no impact on it. People have to understand that. I know that you're one of the people who wishes that we could just revoke it, you'd like to be, go away, and, and you're probably not alone in that, but it's still there. And yeah, if Concord were to say, hey, we give up our, our appeal and we're gonna go forward, that, that would be the end of it, unless somebody from this side appealed.
So I just wanna make sure I heard, heard correctly. So this intermunicipal agreement is completely separate from the litigation, is not associated with the litigation whatsoever?
Well, no, it's related to it, obviously, because it's, it relates to an issue that was carved out of our original permit decision. It's, the difficulty we have with our permit decision is that the inclusion of the two-way water service in our original decision was objectionable to Concord. So as part of our efforts to resolve that by making a decision that's more palatable, we thought, well, we want this somewhere, so let's put it into a separate agreement. But it doesn't, it doesn't affect the rest of the discussions about the permit decision?
Yeah, so, and so then if we don't have the intermunicipal agreement or the town meeting votes no, then Concord will view the permit settlement in a different light?
It depends. So if on the twenty-ninth, we vote a new permit with new conditions, then that permit is in place, and if that, if there's an agreement to settle litigation by voting that, then we have settled that litigation, and this intermunicipal agreement is separate from that. So if town meeting then subsequently votes down that agreement, the permit's in place, but the, the intermunicipal agreement is null and void, so it doesn't...
Okay, so you are viewing, I think I'm hearing, that the intermunicipal agreement, the draft, is an opportunity, like it's a, a great opportunity for us to not assert our rights for twenty years to guarantee the two-way businesses, the one point four percent of it. So you're, I, I just wanna make sure I understand how it's related to the permit and what happens if the, like, is Concord okay with whatever you're doing regardless of the intermunicipal agreement? That's, I guess, what I'm asking.
We're in negotiations with them.
Yeah, we're still discussing the permit decision, the modified permit decision. We, we tried in November and we didn't succeed, and we're still continuing to discuss because we hope that we'll be able to resolve the, the litigation without having to pursue it. Litigation is expensive, it's time consuming, and I don't know about, you know, other, other municipal entities, but we don't have like a bottomless pit of money. We have a lot of services that people require in our town, and, and we'd obviously rather not expend the money on, on litigation if we can resolve it without the need for litigation, so.
So the intermunicipal agreement is part of settling with Concord?
But they can have it separately.
It's part of our discussion. I mean, this is, you know, it's not either or, it's just a part of what we're trying to do to resolve our issues. And because we can't leave it in the decision as is and, and have an amended decision that Concord will agree to, we're taking it out, but we're not abandoning it. That's the whole point of this, is...
And the view of the majority of the board is that this agreement and this issue is something that should be dealt with in an intermunicipal agreement and not in a site plan permit, and that is why we are carving it out and dealing with it in an intermunicipal agreement, whereas issues like the monitoring or other things that people brought up and were disappointed weren't in this agreement, well, those are in the site plan permit. So there are issues that are still in conditions that, you know, we think can be dealt with in a site plan permit, and there are issues that we think are better dealt with in an intermunicipal agreement, is that's a better, frankly, setting for something like this than a site plan permit. And so that is why we wanna deal with these in an intermunicipal agreement. So the issue is, and it's sort of, so a, a site plan permit can go forward and be approved without the intermunicipal agreement being approved, but due to the, some of the language in the intermunicipal agreement, the intermunicipal agreement can't be approved without a finalized, or, or doesn't take effect until there's a finalized site plan permit or the tolling is, and, you know.
Well, the way it works on that side is that this, if the intermunicipal agreement... is approved and supported at town meeting, then it'll be in effect. But under the terms of the agreement, the Concord's commitment to supply water to existing and new and expanded uses isn't intact until it also gets its special permit for the treatment plan.
So it's all part of the litigation?
Yeah, I mean, all of this, this stems out of the settlement discussions attempting to resolve the package of issues stemming from the special permit.
Sorry, I just keep hearing two different things. I hear that it's separate, and then I hear that it's...
It's a separate, it's a complete, it's a separate document that'll stand independent. Well, not even, not even totally independent, I suppose. They are linked in some ways, as it's described in the agreement. But instead of having a special permit that attempts to impose on Concord an obligation to continue providing water to users on 2A and to future users and to impose these regional cooperation provisions, the concept here, as reflected in this document, is to take those conditions out of the special permit, deal with them in a separate document. They aren't completely independent because the commitment that Concord's willing to make, it only kicks in if it ultimately gets the special permit. It's not saying that they have to get it before they sign it or something like that. They understand that they may be on different timing tracks.
Thank you. I urge, I urge you, I guess, to make that permit contingent upon the town meeting vote on the intermunicipal agreement, because it's our rights that, in effect, you're giving away as part of a permit process for unrelated but related intermunicipal agreement that's kept in closed doors, but it's not part of the litigation, but it's still kept behind closed doors even though it's not related. So I just wish you put the decision in the hands of the people. I urge you. Thank you.
Tara, the permit decision is within the authority of the board to issue without, you know, town meeting vote. I mean, this 2-way agreement has, because it relates to basic rights of Acton under an 1884 law, is that's the reason that it's going to town meeting at all. There were some people on the board who thought we didn't have to go to town meeting, but the majority of the board felt that it was important to get board of selectmen input. But that doesn't mean that we're going to go and condition a permit decision that we have authority to issue typically without any town meeting input, that we're going to condition approval of that or our action on that on what happens at town meeting. I mean, if town meeting kills the intermunicipal agreement, it's gone, but we still have the permit decision to discuss. And what happens to that remains to be seen.
Thank you. I didn't want in any way, shape, or form to suggest that I was questioning your authority. I understand that you have the authority to approve giving, I mean, to approve the permit. I'm saying that you have the option to condition the permit to the intermunicipal agreement, which I think would be appropriate, given the town meeting vote last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm learning Mary Lynn Miller, formerly of Nagog Woods from '82 to '86, now of West Acton. And I would like, I too, even though you have the power to, don't get upset if I make people angry. It may not be wise.
You keep apologizing for being angry, and I have to say that, yes, I honestly don't remember you being angry.
No, no, I'm saying you guys are angry.
No, I didn't say...
No, no. Okay, you're not angry. Good. I would like to, I myself, even though this board has the power to make this momentous decision, I'm not a lawyer. I never took a political science class, but I know I would love to have the chance to vote on such a matter. I don't know, you know, I think just because you have the power doesn't mean, I don't know this legally, but maybe you could open it up as well. Thank you.
I'd just like to make clear that there already is a permit in place. So we're not even in these discussions or negotiations or litigation debating the fact or approval of a permit. The litigation is related to conditions in the permit. And the discussions that we had in the remand hearing, discussions of a potential remand hearing on the 29th would be related to conditions of a permit, not to the permit itself. So we are not debating there is an approved permit in place. That has already happened. We've, this board has already voted on that and approved that. So I just want to make that clear. We're not discussing disproving a permit that we have already approved. We would just be discussing conditions. Those conditions are what is under litigation at this time.
Thank you. I want to clarify, yeah, I was not suggesting that you would give the whole, the original approval to town meeting. I'm saying that you're preparing or considering settling with not the same amount of terms, somewhere in between what they want, somewhere in there. And I'm saying to settle for somewhere in there at the cost of our not asserting our rights for 20, 20 years, I feel like that settlement tied to the town, the intermunicipal agreement in the hands of town meeting, I think, would be the most appropriate thing. I hope I didn't miscommunicate my...
That's fine. I think the last speaker just tried to refer to us bringing the approval of a permit to town meeting, and that is what I was clarifying. So I would just like to...
Thank you. It was just the settlement.
Right. I'm just explaining the situation, because I think there's a lot of confusion among some people. And so I want to make it clear to people that there is a permit in place. The only litigation or negotiations around the, are around the conditions for the permit, not the approval of the permit itself.
All right. Well...
All right. I guess, I want to thank everyone who took the time and the energy to come here and speak tonight, speak and give your thoughts on the agreement that was presented. I guess my first comment to the rest of my board members and to the people here, as well as, you know, maybe anyone who might watch the later portion of this having already left. I heard tonight, two things which I want to comment on. The first is sort of, I guess, the lack of overall strategic planning that Acton has undergone with respect to water resources in terms of present and future needs. And I do think that that's an issue. I do think that it's important for us to, to continue to think about how we want to use and develop water resources in the future. And so I'm encouraged to hear that Mr. Phillips intends to take this question back to the Acton Water District and to talk about, you know, to talk about what might happen if we need to develop new water resources, because I do think that as a town, we should know that. And so, and so to start there, I think that, I think that it's good that all these issues came out of the fact that, you know, it's very clear that Concord has been doing a lot more of this kind of activity than we have. And, you know, and so that ends up in a situation where I think moving forward, hopefully we will be better prepared to answer questions in the future of, you know, what might happen if we need to shut off the Acid Bet Wells? You know, what are our backup water resources? You know, what, what kind of permits would we need to file? Where would we need to go? You know, what will we be looking to do? But I guess the second thing that I heard tonight was sort of an underlying assumption that because of the nature of this agreement and the terms of this agreement, that Acton was agreeing for the next 20 or 25 years to, to not pursue anything with respect to Nagog Pond. At least it was never my intention in crafting this agreement to say that Acton will never do that. My intention in crafting, my intention in at least understanding where this agreement was coming from was to say in the meantime, because Acton doesn't know, you know, what we intend to do with our water resources. We don't know if Nagog is next on the list. We don't know, you know, what we intended to do in the future. And this was part of the reason why I was asking Mr. Phillips the questions that I was asking. In the meantime, while we figure it out, I would still like to have secured the water supply for the residents on 2A. If it turns out that, you know, that we want to pursue Nagog Pond as a water resource, at least, at least I would expect, and I would hope, that a future board at that time would not view this agreement as, as something that would, that would deter them from doing that. I would hope that that board would act in the best interests of Acton and to move forward with whatever it needs to move forward with. To me, this agreement has always been an interim agreement. It is made with the understanding that right now, Acton may not have the best understanding of what it, it, it needs in the future. And while that remains the case, the town, I think it would behoove the town of Acton to, to at least understand, and I think this, as a short-term concession, is a reasonable concession to make to, to keep that water supply on 2A. The people who spoke here tonight obviously disagree with that, and I'll have to think about in detail the comments that I've heard tonight. But I do think that at least as far as understanding, as far as understanding what we're going to do going forward, this, this agreement was intentionally crafted, and the language was intentionally crafted, to not limit the ability of Acton and future boards, future water district commissioners, to pursue any rights that we may or may not have under the 1884 Act, and that was intentional. Because I think it was expected, at least by me personally, that that eventuality might happen and that there shouldn't be any restrictions on Acton's ability to do that in the future. And that should Acton do that in the future, all we do is return to the current state where Concord is now supplying water to the residents on 2A without any legal obligation to do so. Anyway, that was, those were the comments that I had after hearing the feedback from tonight. Obviously, I'd have to go home and think about some of the things that I've heard as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Very eloquent. Anybody else have closing comments?
Sure, I mean, I'll just echo those. I mean, I think, again, you know, there were comments made tonight that we need to think about, you know, what, what would happen after the 25 years? And at that point, will we need to provide water service on 2A? And the answer is probably yes. And we probably need to start thinking, we do need to start thinking about, about providing that earlier, and we should. So we should, the Acton Water District and the town should be thinking about now, how do we start providing and considering providing service on 2A? And I've also heard comments tonight about the town of Concord and their unreliability. And, you know, I agree with that. And frankly, if I thought that Concord would continue to provide this service to the residents and businesses along 2A in perpetuity, then we wouldn't need this agreement. But I don't believe that they will do that. And so they do hold this bargaining chip. And I don't believe that, and I know for a fact that they won't allow new connections above a certain size, and that that has hindered the ability for, frankly, more appropriate development along 2A and development that we'd rather see as a town. And so for me, it makes sense to have this agreement in place so that we can provide some certainty and assurity to the residences and businesses along 2A and so that they can develop in a way that we approve of and without it being restricted by Concord's refusal to provide service. Or to wait for, you know, we talk about the threats to Acton's water. Concord faces threats to their water as well. We all do. And so if they, you know, suddenly start to say, you know, we're, you know, it's taking too long to get our Nagog planned, you know, we have, we've got threats to some of our wells, whatever it ends up being, then they say, you know what, we've got to stop. We can no longer provide service beyond our town boundaries, so we are not going to continue to provide service to along 2A. And we would have to, I think, much more quickly figure out how, as a town or as the water district, we provide that service. So I'd rather give us that time to do it and give us that protection under this agreement to do it. And again, if we do feel the need to assert our rights to Nagog Pond within that timeframe, then we can do that. And it's just with the understanding that we, we then need to provide the service along 2A or that we're back in the position where we are now, where, you know, it's kind of up to Concord's whim of whether or not they decide to continue providing this service. And frankly, I'd be concerned about what would happen if we tried to assert our rights right now without being able to demonstrate an immediate need for that water. I'm not sure what the legislature or the DEP or others would say. And I worry, frankly, that it would end up being more restricted. And I don't, I don't want to do that. I want to go into this, having had a lot of discussions with the DEP, with our state legislators, with Littleton and Concord, to understand that better so that we're not in a worse position or we're not, you know, I can't remember if it was, I think it might have been you, Barry, you said, you know, we'd have to pay them for their loss of water under, you know, what it seems like is an interpretation of the 1884 Act. And so I want to know, what does that entail? What do we think that would entail? And is that worth it to us? You know, or is it worth it instead to come to an agreement with them that if we foresee a need, then they'll provide it through their filtration plant? Because I also, you know, the water districts also, you know, said to us that they would be concerned about having to provide, they don't, they don't use surface water right now, so they would have to create a whole new system to treat surface water. That's very similar to what Concord's proposing. And so how do we, you know, I think we need time to think these issues through and to have these discussions. And those are important to have. And I worry about what would happen if we rush asserting those rights. And so instead, I would like us to think about those more methodically and have those conversations and have that protection in the meantime, that Concord's then not using this, you know, as a chip for that. You know, we've got them, you know, they've, they've agreed to provide the service under this agreement. And so I'd like to see that happen. And again, you know, issues related to monitoring or some of the other issues that are important are things that we will and currently have as a condition in the existing permit and would talk about as conditions in, in any revised permit. But those are, that's where those issues should be dealt with. But issues related to sort of the 2-way service or regional discussion should be in an intermunicipal agreement. And I think that this gives us that guarantee that they're providing service within out for when we need it. And an understanding, I think, that should come in on our side, that we use this time to figure out what it is we want to do and how it is that we will provide that service going forward, because we will likely have to do that. So I'm supportive of this agreement. And I don't know if we need to vote, what we need to vote on tonight, Jeff, but I am supportive of it.
Joan, do you have any comments?
Well, I have a concern. This is an agreement between the town of Concord and the town of Acton, and yet the termination triggering events bring in Littleton.
Part of what we negotiated with them is the discussions we had. So it definitely is something we thought about.
So this may not last more than five minutes, never mind 25 years.
It might not, but it lasts longer than it goes now.
I mean, you can't, you can't assume that just because Littleton is making noises that they're going to go through. I mean, they, as somebody said, they may be posturing. We don't really know what they're going to do. But, yeah, that was, that's been the subject of a lot of discussion, because there are events or instances and the triggering events that we don't have any control over. And, you know, you sort of think, well, how are we going to be able to, how are we going to abide by an agreement where something could happen that we have no control over and it's going to end up terminating the agreement? But that's, yeah. Yeah. I, you know, I honestly think that about assertion of rights, I constantly thought about this. Everybody's trying to interpret the hell out, excuse me, interpret the 1884 Act, what it means. I honestly don't think the legislature has a bead on what it means. I think that ultimately, the solution is going to come down to the three towns sitting down and figuring out what the rights ought to be among the three of them. Okay? I honestly think there's no magic in that language. And at this point, it's been so many decades, it's been over a century, that that's probably where the solution is going to lie in the long term. In the short term, I happen to think that this agreement is the result of a, well, it's just an effort on our part to assure that water service on 2A, which people are saying isn't much water, but honestly, if we had to find an alternative, which is the water district, it would engender a lot of costs. And it's not just the number that Jeff quoted. Yes, I've been talking to the water district staff, so I, you know, I, I know them because I'm the liaison, and I ask questions. And so they, they said it's not just that number. That number's just for laying the pipe, but there are a lot of other additional costs of hooking up properties along 2A that would add to the cost. And of course, the way they allocate costs in the district is to, to the users. So anyhow, but I don't know, yeah. Before we turn to the audience, I don't know, Jeff, if we need to just confirm that we're moving forward with this on Article 26, as is the agreement.
Right. So I can tell... Right, so I can tell you that Concord is having a meeting to, there's the Selectmen in Concord are meeting tonight also and presented the same document that you're reviewing. And the expectation was that both boards were going to review the, the document and vote as to whether or not it really, the request would be, or the motion would be, whether you decide to do this is up to you, but the motion would be, a motion to authorize you as the chairman to sign the document with the understanding that it only takes effect upon support of the town meeting vote and then subject to any, you know, final editorial revisions acceptable to council. Just because we've got some, you know, words, it's, it's taking out placeholders and filling in the gaps.
Or the, you know, the build-out number.
This, we're talking about the agreement, this is going to town meeting.
All town meetings.
No, Concord, Concord's not, Concord's willing to sign this without putting it out to town meeting.
Okay, so that's, that's what's before us is we have to authorize the signing of the agreement.
I mean, alternatively, if you needed time to think about it, I guess I would suggest, though, that you had, we'd schedule a meeting so that you can, you know, make that decision. You know, obviously you want to, you want to make it before town meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, well, the difficulty is if we go forward, we do have the real, the hearing on the 29th and it would.
I do.
We could, I mean, with, where this is concerned, we could always meet the night of town meeting, you know, before, either, either the first night or the second night, we could schedule a meeting to talk about this, but it would be kind of nice to resolve it before then, so.
I guess, is there any reason not to present this in front of town meeting even if we think it will, even if we think it will fail?
The only thing would be if you're not comfortable signing this agreement if town meeting approves it. That's the question before us tonight is are you, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, comfortable signing this agreement subject to town meeting's approval? And so you go into it assuming town meeting would approve it and that this would pass or are you comfortable with this agreement? My answer is yes, but we need to make sure everybody's comfortable voting on that tonight.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, like if town meeting supports this, I'm happy to, I, I think it's fine. If town meeting doesn't support it, town meeting doesn't support it. We are where we are. And I see no reason to prevent town meeting members from voting on things.
I think we're talking about two different issues. I think, I think right now, Jeff, the, what council presented to us was the issue of whether we want, we're prepared to vote to sign the agreement now, go forward with town meeting and present, you know, the whole issue, have the same discussion that we've had tonight. You know, I think that.
I guess the, the only other question I would direct to town council was what constitutes substantial, you know, editorial revisions by, you know, council, like, you know, how much can we realistically change this between now and town meeting if we wanted to?
Filling in the blanks.
You know?
Yeah, the blank spaces, the highlights that happen.
I, I understand that's, that's opening a can of worms.
Insubstantial, we're talking about filling in the blanks, getting rid of the note that I had a placeholder in here that said BOs might want all members to sign, which I don't think is necessary. So it's just cleaning it up as a final document before, before it's signed.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign the intermunicipal water supply agreement, subject to minor revisions with council and subject to the, well, no, I'll make a motion to sign it noting that it's subject to town meeting's approval within the agreement.
Okay, I'm sorry. Point of order. Did you say, did you include authorizing the chairman to sign?
Yes, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to authorize, I said the board's, I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the intermunicipal water supply agreement, subject to minor revisions. And I just noted that it's subject to town meeting approval within the agreement.
Right.
Sarah.
Point of order.
Sure.
Is there a second before we, we'll take your, your point of order Danny, but does this pertain to the motion or does this pertain to something else?
Well, it's a point of order.
Okay, go ahead.
No, it's just that I saw Dr. Caston standing up and I would ask that, I have no idea what she's going to say, but that it take place before the vote rather than after.
Okay.
Well, you can have a motion in a second.
Yeah, is there a second? We have a motion on the table, though. Do you want to wait on the second until, if there's no second, it's, hang on.
I mean, we can have the discussion, we can hear from the public after a second. It's not perused, isn't perused that?
There's no.
So Joan seconded.
Joan seconded, okay. Katie moved and Joan seconded, yes. Go ahead.
I actually stood to respond to something that, to an earlier part of the conversation where I heard very deep engagement with very important questions on behalf of several of the selectmen about how much water there is and what the water sources should be and about how, what exactly our relationship is with Nagog Pond. And I, I was very pleased with the level of engagement with these questions and I just wanted to make the point that a place to pursue these questions further after tonight, these important questions that you raise, is in the context of the water study that was voted at last year's town meeting. And according, and I was encouraging you to participate enthusiastically in the workshop that the Water Resources Advisory Board, RAC, suggested a couple of weeks ago, but when they suggested it, I didn't hear anything like that level of enthusiasm for digging into these details that I heard tonight. And so I just wanted to pick up on that enthusiasm and encourage you to engage with that water study in that same spirit. And at the time that that was presented, there wasn't any money, there wasn't any staff time, there wasn't that level of enthusiasm, so I'm, I'm pleased to see that and I, I see this as a venue where you can pursue the questions that you're raising tonight.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn.
That's right, we're done. Is there a second, I hope?
Joan seconded.
Okay, sorry, you're losing your voice. Katie moves and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.